Alleged agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, for liberty. Oops, sorry. It's this for all. Sorry.
Let's do a group swearing of anybody that wants to give testimony.
I can't understand. No, no, testimonial. It's an opinion, it's not only.
Okay, okay. All right, everyone, want to welcome you all for tonight. Public hearing. Okay, one second. For the way, everybody quiet outside, please. All right, want to welcome you all for the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing for tonight, Wednesday, October 22, 2025. It is 6:30 PM and we are at the multi-service center, room 420, Wareham, Mass., 02571. Marion Road, if I forget this. We're also on Zoom with the passcode 908796. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far left, Mr. Christopher Conti, Mr. Richard Sample, to my right, Mr. Troy Larson, our Clerk Jim Akabachi, myself, the Chair Nazir Akulasi. Also present are Town Planner, Mr. Josh Flaherty, and Assistant, Ms. Sonia Raposo.
Can you shut that door? We can't hear you.
What door? All right, can somebody tell them be quiet outside or they have to leave?
You can't do that.
Or you got to leave town. All right, very well. Okay, before we start tonight, just a reminder, when we have cases like this, everybody will get a chance to speak, get to the point, don't tell me how much you pay taxes and how long you lived in a town or in a neighborhood. It's irrelevant, you waste your time. Just get to the point, state your mind, whatever you want to say, just state it. And like I said, everybody got a chance. And please, and you do not speak over someone else. So you get the chance, you'll only have the floor, I'm going to give it to you. That goes for the board members, for everybody here. When I give you the floor, you speak, otherwise you can't talk. That being said, we also keep it civilized, please. No pointing finger, everybody here doing their job, so you can be pointing finger at people if you're not happy with them. That being said, we'll proceed. Preliminary business for the minutes, 10:08, 2025.
The minutes have been scrutinized, re-scrutinized, edited twice, and are ready for approval. I've reviewed them, Mr. Conti's reviewed them. Anybody else seen them?
I have.
And I make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes for 10:08, 2025, by Mr. Akabachi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sample. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It carries. All right, public hearings, the first public hearing, 31-25, West Street Estates LLC, comprehensive permit for West Street.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on October 22, 2025, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 31-25 for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, proposing 20 rental units, of which five will be affordable for families at or below 80% of the AMI located at 4 West Street, Wareham, Mass. This project appears on Assessors Map 97, Lot 1002A2, in the MR30 zoning district.
All right, who's here from West Street, please? Applicant, attorneys, everybody, please.
And I, these have already been passed out, everybody already has one. You've got one right there. And these are the plans. Good, how are you?
All right, name and addresses, we start, ma'am.
Good afternoon, good evening, sorry, Angela Natella.
Joshua Natella.
Dean Harrison.
Joe Webby, Webby Engineering.
Okay, and who's the counselor? Any counselor?
No, we do not.
Okay, can you all, but we'll have to, cases like this, we got to warn you, and so can you all please stand up, raise your right hand, and listen to the clerk.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please be seated. All right, who's presenting the case?
My name is Dean Harrison, I'm the housing consultant for the applicant. West Street, West Street Estates LLC. With me tonight, I have the applicant, as I introduced themselves before, I also have the engineer with us also tonight. First, I'd like to say thank you for having us here tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to present our proposal. As you mentioned in the opening statements, we are proposing 20 multifamily units, a combination of one, two, and three bedrooms of the 20 units. Five would be affordable in perpetuity for individuals earning less 80%, or less of median income. As you know, because you have experience in 40B, under rental development, all 20 units count towards your 10%, even though five units are deed restricted.
I'm going to interrupt you for one second, please. You said you're proposing 20 multifamily units.
Yes.
So how many families per unit?
One, 20 units.
Are you talking about 20, one multifamily project with 20 units?
One multifamily project with 20 units.
I didn't, okay.
Okay.
I wanted to know if we had 20 multifamilies or one project?
No, no.
Thank you. All right.
No, no problem.
Sorry to interrupt you, but...
No, that's fine. Like I said, it's a combination of one, twos, and three bedrooms. We must have three bedrooms in the development, there's going to be at least 10% because that is the regulations under the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So we do have two, two three-bedroom units. The rest is a combination of one and two bedrooms. But before we get into the detail of the application itself, I'd like to have our engineer, Joe Webby, to introducing, showing the proposed site and location.
This is the site on West Street.
Do you need to hold the microphone or point it at you?
Sorry.
The directionals off you.
Yeah. Currently, this is, the address is 4 West Street, and it contains about approximately 1.38 acres, and there currently is a duplex on the property.
So what's going to happen to the duplex that's already there?
It's going to be in a dumpster.
It's going to be razed.
It's going to be done.
So then what we're proposing to do is to demolish that existing building and then put in three buildings that will total with the 20, 20 units. We'll also have a, these will all be serviced by septic syst, Ongrade's ground septic systems and municipal town water. We have enough parking, I believe that it's 20, 30 spaces total parking for the units, which would be adequate. We also have prepared stormwater basin to accept all that water that will be developed in this area. And basically, that's the, that's really what we're trying to do.
All right. First question I'm going to ask, did you, did you claim safe harbor, you have safe harbor? Did you figure out your numbers?
From what I, what I have looked at, I did not find anything that you're a certified community and that you've reached your safe harbor for this year. I do know, under the most recent subsidized housing inventory, you are still below 10%. Your, what I see on the website is 7.0, I think it was 7.3. Like I said, you're not a certified community, I did not see you, that the town has met their safe harbor. You know, obviously, that, what we're going on, if something has changed since we submitted the application, I'm not aware of it. So we, we don't see that, we see that we are now in the process, so we can take, continue, can continue to present the proposal as, as we submitted it to the town.
I understand, but if it's not on the system, it doesn't mean they don't exist, they do exist.
Understood.
Even, even the one that's not permitted, which is all our 40B been permitted, even the time they file, it goes on record. So we have to elaborate on that and find out exactly what it is. Because I believe with the one we had approved lately and everything else, we're well over 10%, but Mr. Josh would know better.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with you, I believe with the recent approval, we would be over 10%. Sorry, I think that's working now. We would be over 10%, but we still do have to wait for the certification from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So as their application stands, they are a permissible project under the 40B process.
Okay. So that being said, we'll still hear you, we'll still hear your case. Nothing could stop the board from granting such permit if they feel it deserves it, nor does the state. State can still always approve a permit, but you're here, we're going to send you some homework to do, to approve what Mr. Flaherty said, Josh, on that 10%, and you do some research and come up with an answer. So anyway, so keep briefing us also more before we open the public, the questions.
Yes, not a problem. As I stated earlier, we're doing 20 new rental units, combinations of, you know, one, twos, and threes. We have a total of 30 parking spaces. As I mentioned earlier, we have 25% of the units will be affordable, which is five. We have provided both engineering drawings and the architectural drawings, which I believe Chairman you are looking at right in front of you. As, as our engineer pointed out, the site had, has an existing two-unit building on the property. It will be demolished as part, as part of the redevelopment of the property. The new buildings are located towards the back end of the property. We do not have any wetlands on the property. There is town water, however, we will be doing septic.
Let me ask the board some questions. Before we go further, for next time, your plan has to be stamped with the architect, they're not stamped.
I will, I will make sure that that...
All right, and we need a list of your waivers and your pro forma, show on...
I, I, there was a list of waivers provided. I don't have the town's website open that has the application in it, but we did provide...
Oh, you did provide it, it's in here?
Yeah, should be in the hard copies. Yeah, we're looking for very minimum relief. Basically, the relief we're looking for is to allow 20 units to be built on this property. Currently, zoning doesn't allow it, but we do meet all the setback requirements and so forth.
You meet parking too?
Yes.
All right, I want to start by question, Mr. Larson, Troy.
I don't have any questions right now.
Jimmy?
Just, I was half listening and trying to read.
Okay.
What's the status on the septic? Is it municipal or is it onsite?
It will be onsite.
Yeah, there's no surrender.
That was my, that's it for me for now. Chris?
Yes, we are here tonight, obviously, to present a very, our project to you and obviously to the community. We understand that there is many steps here, and as you all know, we will have to go through a peer review, which is very common, which where the, will our engineer and our architect will work with your peer reviewer to work on such those types of questions. And make sure that what we're proposing meets all state requirements, and as far as we can make, meet all local requirements, then what we stated in there, and that's a preliminary one, because obviously, when we work with the peer review, a lot of times they come up with other waivers that we need to request. But this is preliminary.
We understand.
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned something about a pro forma. As you probably know, in a comprehensive permit, you do not have to provide any information regarding the financial feasibility of the project. In the past, you used to, but the regulations have changed. And so the board will not be getting a pro forma from us as part of this review.
So the state allows you to file with our pro forma?
We filed, yes, we, under the project eligibility letter, which you had received and is part of the application, and which you had received, there is a pro forma in that, and that's all I will submit.
Ah, okay. Interesting.
We are in a MR30 residential zone. The property...
R30 or MR30?
MR.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty small, so I have to log it. As I mentioned, the other building's going to be demolished, and we're proposing two new buildings, two stories high, garden style, and unfortunately, our architect has lost a family member and was not able to attend tonight with the boards, but we are trying to get those for next time. We can go into a little bit more detail on the unit breakdown and so forth, but currently we're proposing, can't remember all this anymore offhand.
For the number of units, you mean?
Yeah, I'm just, it's, my PowerPoint is not working here for me for some reason. Yeah, it's right here. We are proposing, we're going to do of the three buildings, the total of 12 one-bedrooms, six two-bedrooms, and two three-bedrooms.
Okay.
All right, we've got each, total parking spaces is 30, as I mentioned before. Lot coverage, building coverage is approximately 12%. Impervious coverage is approximately 40% of the, of the lot. And like I said, we meet most of the setback requirements, I think we meet all setback requirements, other than, as I mentioned, allowing 20 multifamily, 20 units of multifamily housing on the, on the site.
All right, very well. Go back to you, Chris.
So from, from looking at the plans, to me, I look, I think it's quite dense. You have all these buildings and all this parking and this 1.38 acres, to me, it seems too, way too clustered. I think there's way too many one-bedroom units. 30 spaces, I'm not sure whether that's enough. Is there a recreation area on this, on this property?
We haven't, we...
Sir, let him, let him finish.
Okay, sorry.
Everybody got, go ahead, Chris.
And I don't think it fits into the neighborhood well. So those are my, my original comments right now, and...
Sir, Richard?
That's it, that's all I have right now.
It's funny because you see, I see, I see the plot plan where the buildings are going, but I don't see anything designated for your septic systems.
He, he does on the big plans in the front.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, we have a whole system of septic system in this area for that building, one here in the parking area, and one here for the first bedroom.
Okay.
All right, Rich?
Other than the fact that I can agree with Mr. Conti, I think it's a, a sardine can. That's all I got to say about that.
All right, sir, you want to say something?
No, I was just, I appreciate your input. Regarding the density, I know that that's always a question and a concern. Under the proposal we have here, this density is well within range of what is allowable under both mass housing, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. We received a project eligibility, as you know, from mass housing, and they have no concerns with the density. As we did propose, I understand, we're trying to meet your parking requirements. I'd rather have less parking. Obviously, the less impervious, the better, but we are trying to meet your requirements of the number of parking spots. You know, like the buildings, while are compact, that's kind of what the designs are going to today, is to minimize the footprint coverage of, for the properties. So we think we have a good design here. Don't expect everybody to agree with me, nor does everybody agree with me. So that being, density is well within the requirements of 40B regulations.
All right, thank you. Josh, you have something to say?
Sir?
All right, anyone here in favor of the project? Favor first. All right, against, did you guys, for the neighbors, do you have like a designate or speaker, or everybody wants to speak?
Everybody wants to speak.
Everybody? All right, so we start one at a time, you could take this chair. Who wants to go first?
Does that microphone work? Check and make sure that microphone's working.
And to, because usually, we'll let you speak as much as you want, but because it's too many people, like I said, make it efficient. You state your name and address, make it efficient, get to the point, within two minutes, three minutes max, so everybody has the chance to speak.
I don't have any issues with that microphone. If they could make room to the table...
All right.
Use my mic?
No, no, it won't work.
So one of you four people excuse yourself so they can come up, or that way I won't...
Next to Josh, please. No, no, Josh, haven't sat next to you. You can stay, ma'am, you can sit down. Yeah, much better, keep the separation.
Yep.
You can have a seat if you wish, or you can stand up.
My name's Christopher Buckingham. I live at 11 West Street, right down the street from this proposal. This actually might be a question for Josh. I believe the Redbrook Development Properties meet the state's 10%. And also...
Let him finish, Josh.
Also, I believe the Affordable, Affordable Housing Committee refused to sign a letter of support due to density in a residential area, so...
Which committee, sir? Which Affordable Housing Committee?
The Affordable Housing Authority Committee.
In Wareham?
Yes.
Okay.
And, yes, that was my question to you about the Redbrook.
Yeah, so I, like I said earlier tonight, I think there are a few projects that have recently been approved, one being the Red, Redbrook Project, the other being an expansion of Cranberry Manor located on Cranberry Highway. Unfortunately, while they, they do count towards our SHI, we are not able to act on being in safe harbor until the Executive Office of Livable Housing and Livable Communities approves those, which they have not done so as of tonight. And, and even more, they would have had to do it before the applicant had applied with the town as well. So, so you consider what their application would be, almost as a, I'll call it a zoning freeze, where they got in before any eligible, eligibility letter of safe harbor was presented to the town.
Okay. My other question is, what are the plans for the amount of traffic that's going to bring down that street?
Yeah, this, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Say this again, Josh, you don't, you don't think, what's the name, the 150 units?
Oh, everybody's calling it the Redbrook Project.
The Redbrook, Redbrook don't count?
It, it does count, it just, it, they, it hasn't been acknowledged by the Executive Office as of yet, meaning the town of Wareham has not been certified as being in safe harbor.
But safe harbor is very clear, that if there's an application in order, it counts. So in other words, let's say per year, I think we could do only 1.5% max. So if there's an application of 1.5 towards the 10%, you can't take more application in that year, even though they're not approved. So they do count without being approved, just so you know.
Understood, thank you.
We, I'm sure you do your research, gentlemen, will do research, next time we talk about it.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get you something from...
Right, okay, next person who wants to speak against this project? Yes, come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Sidney Pious, I reside at 15 West Street. Been there for 65 years, third-generation family, family's been there since the 30s, along with a lot of my neighbors, or a lot of us are second, third-generation families, predominantly single-family homes there. And I just have a question for the applicant. Last year, they sent out an informal letter to some of my neighbors, and at that time, they were proposing six units. I was wondering how it ballooned up to 20 in over a year's time. Do you recall that letter, where they had coffee and donuts and so on?
That's, sir, sir, I just thought, listen. Time out, ma'am. You only speak to me, you don't turn your face to the person speaking, only to me, and when I give you the floor. Other than that, I'll have to let you leave the room. Don't answer a question until I ask you. People, to you, sir, it just happened, they want six, they want 20. It's just, that's how it is.
Okay, that was just a question.
Okay.
All right, so the applicant, they reside in South Weymouth, so they're obviously not a Wareham resident, correct?
What it says on the paper, yes.
Yeah, South Weymouth. And I was just wondering if there's any 40B projects in their neighborhood, and how would they feel if there was a 40B project in your neighborhood in South Weymouth?
That's a question you have to ask the applicant outside. We cannot answer this here.
Well, they could have answered, when's the last time they've been to the property that they own at 4 West Street?
Again, this isn't what's before us. Like I said before, if we're going to go back and forth...
Well, just trying to get a feel for what type of...
You're asking me what's happening in Weymouth.
What type of landlord they are.
I don't know.
Well, I'm just, what I'm trying to tell you.
It's irrelevant.
They live on the street, the 4 West Street, they don't take their trash out.
Sir, let me explain something to you.
Go ahead.
To help yourself and the neighbors, don't point fingers and don't ask questions out of the subject. Trust me. Stick with the subject.
All right, so the subject...
Trash, Weymouth, this is not going to help. You're just making it worse for you and your...
Well, I'm just trying to let the people know what type of landlord that...
Sir, this is not a question about a character. We don't care, the character doesn't come in play here. Unfortunately, this is how zoning work. It's not about a character.
Oh, no?
No, absolutely not. It's about the land and the plans, period.
Okay, so they get one point, they have 1.3 acres of land. I have two and a half, my brother has an acre, my sister has an acre, so we have four, we have four acres. Another neighbor in the neighborhood also has 3.7. So you're telling us that we can put 80 units in there if we went through the proper procedure?
Probably, yeah.
Probably, oh, yeah, okay.
Probably you can.
Okay, so everybody hear that there, sir?
Sir, sir, hey, hey, you'll have a chance. I'm, I'm, listen, unfortunately, I'm giving you the brutal truths. It's the truth. You can apply for a 40B and do what they're doing, yes.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so I looked at the plans, plans look, they look good, buildings look pretty good, except for, I just think they have the wrong neighborhood.
Okay.
It's predominantly single-family homes there, I believe there's 20, 21 homes in which three of them are two fam, three of them are duplexes. So that's just a whole lot of units in that small, that small little area. And definitely parking's going to be an issue there. I didn't see anything in the plans with regard to, back to the two tenants that are there now that put the trash out in the street. I didn't see anything in the plans with regard to a dumpster, where they, these 20 units going to bring their barrels out to the street?
We, and reviewing this, when we do the site plan, we will make sure there's a path for the dumpster and the location for it.
Okay.
If to be, if to be approved.
Who's going to manage the property? Is it going to be professionally managed, or is the, the owner's going to manage this property?
Okay, sir, who's managing the property?
We're going to have a third-party management company that is experts in 40B developments. We're gonna have a third-party management company that is experts in 40B developments, and it would be, we will, as part of the permit, if approved, we'll provide you with further information about that as we get closer.
All right, that's your answer. Yes, Jimmy?
This isn't a question and answer session. This is a chance for them to come up and state their objections, are they in favor, and then sit down.
I understand, but...
If we're gonna do back and forth, we're gonna be...
I know. I know the sensitivity of the project. Go ahead, what else you like to say?
Well, no, just back with that 10%, so, you addressed that, right, Josh, with regard to Redbrook, whether it qualifies or not?
We'll get to the bottom of that, next hearing.
Well, I was just, I just want to make sure that my eight grandchildren, my neighborhood's kids, my two friends that are in wheelchairs, that we're gonna add an additional 30 or 40 vehicles on that street, there's no sidewalks, what are we supposed to do, go on people's lawns with our kids and my friends in a wheelchair? How are they gonna keep us safe, the kids in a wheelchair, the young men in a wheelchair, and then our children and grandchildren? The people on Bellatoris, they got a bunch of little kids, they come down the street safely, little scooters and so on and so forth, but now with this additional 30, they got 30 cars, you assume there's two 20 units, assume there's two vehicles per household. There's 40 cars, it's not including guests, it's not including friends, if they got teenagers, there you got vehicles, where are you gonna fit 40, 50 more cars on a narrow street without sidewalks? That's my concern.
All right, we get you, we get the point, thank you, we'll allow someone else. No, no applauding. You can't, I know you're probably happy with what he said, but in public hearings, you can't applaud. Otherwise, we'll have to shut the hearing down, or we have to let you leave the room. This is the rules, I don't make them, I follow them, sorry. I know you're excited, but it doesn't work that way. Next person.
Dan Savery, I'm a neighbor next door, I would say I object to this development. I guess I'll have to wait till next week for the environmental impact, because, you know, I live in two Bellatoris Circle, and I'm told that I have wetlands behind me, I know it's a dry river during the summer months, and I don't see how I can have wetlands behind my house, and this development right next door doesn't not have wetlands behind theirs. So, that's a good, one reason, also I agree with Mr. Pires and all his statements, too, so, object.
All right, thank you. Just to answer your question, they will eventually go to conservation if they have to, for wetlands, so that's a completely different board. But if there is wetland, they have to sign off, conservation will have to sign off. We're, we're there, thank you. Next person would like to, yes, sir?
Charles Hampton, 4A Rolling Mill Road. Can I ask some questions about the plans? Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay, so, so you're gonna do a septic for this development?
Correct.
For 20 units, how big is the system gonna be? I mean, is it gonna be a 10,000-gallon unit, or is it gonna be, because I know for a three-family, for a three-person home, the minimum you can have is a 1,500-gallon septic tank. So, I wanna know how much is, how big are the septic tanks gonna be? You say you wanna put one in the front, one in the back, and then you wanna do parking on top of the septic. So I just wanna know how big the septic's gonna be, and as far as, like Mr. Pires said about the parking, I don't see how you're gonna get 30 parking areas, parking spaces back there. It is a small lot. I mean, I live on that street, and I can walk by, and there's a little yellow house there that, it's just a small area, it's basically, you can, you can say 1.38 or 1.39, but it's actually one and a quarter, and then 150 feet off the street. That really breaks it down to it being a lot smaller. Then you're gonna put three units in there, you know, and like the gentleman over there said, where you wanna put 12 one-bedroom units in there. Okay, so 12 one-bedroom units in there, and what was the other thing? Two bedrooms and two three-bedrooms? So that's gonna add at least, let's just say, 50 more people in the neighborhood? That's just loosely. So, that's a lot of sewage going back into the ground over our way. All right, now, we have, like, Peachy has a farm. We, the gentleman that came up after Peachy, he lives right next door to it. So if some, I mean, six-family makes sense, because you could put three duplexes, I guess, that's what I have, a duplex. But 20 units, that's kind of extreme. And I know it's all about the almighty dollar in the end, I'm not trying to shake nobody or nothing, I'm not trying to throw no shade, but as a person that pays taxes back there, and when they build this, these units, that's gonna raise our taxes for the simple fact that it's gonna be more buildings back there, so they have to pay more taxes for me to live in there, for something that I'm not gaining nothing off, I don't think it's fair at all, that's all I have to say. But could we get an answer on the septic, too? Thank you.
Yes, sir. The septic, I'll answer this, this would be border health, they'll determine the size after the engineer determine. I know it's 110-gallon per bedroom, and there's a buffer zone, I believe the border health at 10%, so whatever, based on that perk, it'll be the size of the leaching field, but it's 110 gallons a bedroom, per 24 hours. But that's a, that's a, that's a border health question, not for us.
Okay.
And that's a heard, what's that, sir?
Will they be here at one of these meetings?
Border health, yeah, they're gonna have to, if they deem necessary.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
But if they meet all the criteria of the border health and no hearing required, they won't be here, they won't be for a hearing if they meet the criteria.
I didn't know what the criteria meant, thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Yolanda Hampton.
On the phone.
My name is Yolanda Hampton, and I live at 4A Rolling Mill Road. I want to talk about the safety of our children. At this time, we do not have sidewalks, there are no sidewalks. There's limited space for the owners that live here. We do have children in this, a lot of people have children and grandchildren that play amongst the street. So with the safety is, when people are driving through our neighborhood, for people that are just coming to visit, there's no, there's no speed signs there or anything. So what's gonna happen for the safety of all our children? That means that if we get all these units in here, that means people are gonna be scared, people are gonna be nervous for their children to go out. Who are they renting to? You know what I'm saying? I mean, is there gonna be a full background check on each individual that rent, that rents these? When you have, unfortunately, when you have low income, that means anybody is able to come in, because we can't discriminate against any, anybody who rents. And I feel like it is, it is a lot for our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is not built to have three units, multi-families, we are all single-family homes, everybody in this neighborhood knows one another. And this means we're gonna be, bring all types in. Maybe, a lot of people that have housing, they let a friend come and live with them. Is that friend gonna be a, you know, a person that has a background felony? We don't have to lock our doors. Does that mean now that all these people move in, that we have to lock our doors and lock our windows? I understand that it is about the almighty dollar, and I understand that the owners and who are building these live in a beautiful neighborhood in Yarmouth. We live in West Wareham, and it's a small, small village, where everybody here looks out, not just for one another, but we look out for our children. We slow down when our children, we see them on their bikes. I just feel that it's over the top, and I'm totally against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Hello, my name is Lisa Rusonowski, I live on Weaver Street, just a little ways from you guys. I was made aware, I'm not sure if it's the Development Authority or the Redevelopment Authority of Wareham, I could be wrong on the name of the committee, also refused to write a letter of support for this project. I also object, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Who's gonna be next after this lady, so we don't have to waste a minute in between speakers, please?
So, actually, backing up, I'm Lauren, I'm at 8 Rolling Mill, which is right off of West Street, and I have three young children, been in the neighborhood now for a little over 10 years, and basically, like what Yolanda said, I think that the size of this project is way too big for the size of this neighborhood. It's already a narrow road with no sidewalks, and I even think about the school bus coming down that street, and emergency vehicles, there's, in my head, just living in that neighborhood, I cannot understand how anybody could look at that area and say, yep, that totally makes sense for that size of a development. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Leithold, I live on Minot or Minowav, whatever it is, and we just moved here in...
I need the address, sir.
69...
Minet Avenue?
Minot Ave, yeah.
Minet Ave over here?
Yeah.
Next one, just go, okay.
Yeah. I don't know where this is in relation to me, because we just moved here, but generally speaking, I don't think it's a mystery that renters don't care as much about the town they live in, because they're not necessarily gonna be there forever. I've rented, I don't hate renters, and I want people to make money, you know, but, and new buildings are good, but maybe not rentals, you know, or at least maybe not as many, maybe not as cheap, just for the sake of the town, moving forward.
Thank you.
That's kinda...
Next person? Who else would like to speak? Okay, that's good, yeah, go ahead, sir.
Jeremy Crete, 16 Pierceville Road, right in the neighborhood, not to waste your time, but my family has owned that property since 1840. That's quite a bit of time. We've been here for a very, very long time. This neighborhood will not, does not fit this project at all. Like everyone here has said, the amount of traffic, you got 20 units, that's guaranteed 40 extra cars, not including visitors, not including guests, not including friends. We, it does not fit, it's too much. We all know each other, it's a tight-knit neighborhood. I'm told that I need 30,000 square feet to build an ADU in my backyard. I can't house my mother affordably, but you guys wanna put 20 units on one acre. 30,000 square feet, just, just to be clear, is a half an acre of land.
It's actually three-quarters, sir.
Well, it's close enough, right? We're talking 1, 450 square foot ADU, right? On less than half, less than half an acre. This is 20 units on one acre of land. It does not fit, I object, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, my name's John Kelleher, I live at 1 Bellatoris Circle, right next door to the property. Roughly, there's 23 houses in our neighborhood, a couple of them are duplexes, so roughly 28, 29 families. You're asking the neighborhood to get doubled with one acre, 1.3 acres of land. That's, that's crazy. That's, that neighborhood, it's just single-family houses. There's a better place to put a multi-unit, 20-unit place, not in this neighborhood. It's not good, the traffic's not gonna be good, it's not a good idea, and I oppose this process. Thank you.
Okay. Next person?
Good evening, my name's Kelly Buckingham, and I reside on West Street, 11 West Street. I would like to echo the same concerns of my neighbors with the denseness of the property and the massive increase in population size in our neighborhood. I also have concerns with it, abouting the train tracks like it do, like it does, what are we doing to mitigate the risk factors of additional people moving in there and being so close to the train tracks? I also had concerns about our, the Pierceville Road Bridge, which has been shut down at least twice since I have lived there, and is that gonna be able to handle the increased traffic to that area? Other than that, those are my two additional concerns I had.
Thank you for your input. Who's next?
Good evening, my name is Lorna Augustin, I'm at 13 West Street, West Wareham, Mass. I object with this project, I do piggyback with what everyone was saying in our, in the group. I have two young daughters, and my concern is their safety and everyone else's safety. We all get along with this neighborhood, we all respect one another, and with this project coming up with all these housing that's coming in the neighborhood, I do object with it, I don't think it's a good idea, I don't think it's safety, there's, there's gonna be a problem when there's the weather, when it's snowing, who's gonna, we plow, we help each other out in here in this neighborhood. There's literally not enough space when there's traffic coming in and out, when there's snow, when there's no snow, there's always cars driving, people are not paying attention, we pay attention because of our, safety of our kids, and we respect each other. But I really do not think this is a good idea, I oppose to this project, I think it's a waste, I'm sorry, it's just my opinion, and good luck, that's all I can say.
Thank you. All right, I guess everybody's spoken, well...
I have one on the line I'd like to speak.
Got a hand up on Zoom. All right, go ahead. State your name, sir, and address.
Riley Ash, Riley Ash, 18 Pierceville Road, I just want to say I object to the project, it matches a pattern of 52 Plain Street in Pembroke, where they're trying to use 42B to push it in, in residential neighborhoods, and I object, that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, John?
All right, here's the good news and the bad news. The good news, once we're, Mr. Ferrari, Josh, comes out with the, if he comes out with the numbers and certified that we have our 10%, we could deny this project. But the bad news, they could still go out to the state and fight it. And the bad news, if we deny him, based on all the comment everybody said, traffic, kids, police, school, unfortunately, the state does not care. See, this goes to the state, and it becomes out of our jurisdiction. Even though they are in our jurisdiction here, we can only do so much. Now, I'm telling you the truth, I'm not gonna tell you stories, make you happy. So, yeah, we have two options. Hopefully, the board, I mean, the department comes out with the 10%, and we could deny the project if we wish to, if the board wishes, I'm not saying the board, maybe they wish to approve it, I don't know, but they can still appeal it. And if they don't, my recommendation, if all the neighbors talk together, come out with some sort of a deal, say, listen, we won't fight you if you make X amount of units, two, five, 10, 15, I don't know, all of you, what's, when you leave, talk to each other, say, listen, I think I'll be comfortable with six units, with 10, whatever, and come back, with next meeting we meet, say, listen, we will be comfortable if you do so many units. Fighting and butting heads in projects like this, it gets nowhere. It's always, the state will have the last choice, and in most cases, the state wins, and the applicant wins. Doesn't mean we support, all of us understand, all of us understand the detriment, the neighbors, the numbers, schools, police, sidewalk, traffic, speeding, all these things, we understand, but we're not the last persons to say yes or no, we're the first one, and everybody comes after us, will override us. So, that being said, we're gonna continue this matter, just for the heck of it, like I said, discuss it among each other, say what makes you happy, and you could always come back, say, nothing makes us happy the way it does make us happy, and that's where we're going, and then we go from there. But try to come up with some numbers, it might work. And this, and the board, of course, we're gonna do what's good for the neighbors, because we are Wareham locals, and we'll do what's good, but we don't want it to blow in our face and your face eventually, because if it blow ups, it comes 10 times harder. If we, let's say, I'm just speculating, let's say we say no, and they go to the state, the state give them everything they want, just to let you know, so it's not easy to say no, that's why we don't just come out, if we wanna say no, say no, we'd like to talk, and mediate, and hopefully we get to an agreement. So, that being said, think about it. Yes, ma'am?
When you're done.
I'm done.
Okay, before you release the applicants, would you like me to get the consultant, our engineer, involved, or are you wanting to give them some time?
Yeah, sir.
Yes, Dean Harrison again. Mr. Chair, we would like to start the process with a peer review. I understand we will be looking into the issue about 10%. But to keep this moving on a, you know, we end up paying, the applicant pays anyways. So we'd like to start that process so we can start doing the engineering for the project, the property, have them do a peer review. And also, we will start a traffic, we'll hire a traffic engineer also to come up with a traffic study that we then will present to the town, who can present to their peer review, to review also.
All right, Sonia will give you the, our engineer.
I'll get Alan Major involved. And then he'll give me a quote, which I will forward to you. And then at that point, I'll need the funds to go ahead and establish your account.
Yes. And what was his name again?
My name?
No, no, the-
Alan and Major.
Alan and Major?
Alan and Major Associates. Typically, Phil Cordero is our, who you'll be working with.
Nice, thank you.
You reach out to the office in the morning, she give you all the rundown.
I'll speak with you within the next day.
All right, I see someone else wants to speak. Yes, ma'am?
Would you want to say something else?
Your name again.
Yolanda Rosario, I live on Rolling Mill Road. You, you're assuming, you said that if it goes to the state, none of us, they don't care about safety. They don't care about the traffic, they don't care about. So what is the point of us having this here? What do you care about? Like, what is the purpose? It is about the old mighty dollar. It is probably about that. Because everything that everybody's concerned, that we've had voiced here, it seems like it's been shut down. It has. It feels like the septic, well, we can't answer that, we don't know. Or the parking, well, we can't answer that. That's for, you know, the water, it's wet ground. We can't answer that because that goes to that department. What department is responsible for all of this?
Okay.
Like, who? And I understand what you talk about. I know you're like, you're sitting up there and you're saying, this is it. Let's all get together, and we're going to all get together, and we're going to make a plan. We are already planning, we are all here today to make this plan. Do we all have to get together? Maybe we can just say it now. Should we all get together and make picket signs and march like they do? Like, let's march, is that what we should do?
That doesn't help you, no. I'm just, I'm telling you, it don't help.
But I understand, but you're already shutting us down.
No, I'm not.
No, no, we're going to, we're not going back and forth. I gave you your piece, and I'm talking. Now, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, if it's not about the safety, if it's not about this, if it's not about that, then what is it about? Since we're all here together, let's all talk about it. Because I feel like all you guys, all you, not nobody else, you, all you're saying is, you know, we all better come together, maybe we can talk about six units. So it's not about the 20 units or the six units. Because whether it's 20 units or six units, this neighborhood cannot sustain this at all. The parking, they talked about the parking. Oh, we got 30. There's going to be 70-plus cars. The neighbors that live here now, they're limited to their cars. When we have little, small cookouts, we go around to each neighbor and say, hey, we're going to have a cookout because we might have to use the front of your house. We, I feel like we are stuck. And we can sit here and look at one another and be like, yeah, this is not the neighborhood. I commend that they want to do this, but this is not the neighborhood to do it. Come, walk around the neighborhood, look at everybody, look at the houses. It's not going to fit in, it just isn't going to fit in. And everybody on this board knows that. It is going to bring ruckus to our neighborhood, where we have a peaceful neighborhood. It is. And I'm sorry, I just object to this. I wish that they could find another property. I'm sure there's a lot of property in Wareham that they can build it. Why pick West Wareham? It's not right. They don't have to live there.
Thank you.
Thank you for your passionate comments. Thank you. And whoever it is that's speaking over there, it's not your turn. We can't hear each other if you guys are speaking while we're speaking.
Speak and help him out.
You're just trying to help him out? We'll all stop what we're doing and let you, let you leave. Thank you. I appreciate you helping him. Thank you. And I see somebody else came to the microphone. So before I answer the ladies' questions, if you want to recognize her, I'll wait to answer the-
Now, before you go, let Mr. Akabachi go ahead.
All right, so what I started to say is that our chair has made a very wise recommendation to this group, this community. We, as a board, may or may not agree or disagree with an application. But as a board, we understand how 40B works. So you might think that Donald Trump won the popular vote, or you might think that he won the Electoral College, but there's ways things work.
Ma'am, ma'am.
What I'm saying is, whether you agree or disagree with the- Huh?
It's withdrawn, that's common. Go ahead, catch on up.
Yeah, the, I'm just trying to say, sometimes you see something and you don't agree with it, but it's the way it is. So what our chair is trying to say to you is, the lady's question was, what good is this meeting? Why are we here? Why are we all here? And I'm trying to lead up to the fact that the good of this meeting is that this is an opportunity for the town to mitigate this application. We, as a board, know that if we're not at 10%, the state can say, we approve this site. And if you guys deny it, and they appeal it, we'll overrule your decision. And in the instance of an overruling, then the state, then we don't have anything to say. So the chair has offered this community some very good advice. Because when other projects have come in, we had a project that's been mentioned three or four times in this meeting this evening, that came in front of us as in excess of 200, I think it was 239. And they ended up building 150 units. Well, even 150 seemed objectionable, but it's less than 200 and whatever it was. And in the process of doing that project, their feet were held to the fire. Access, egress, safety, places for buses to- That's what the purpose of this meeting is. So if you folks have real legitimate concerns, I'll give you another example. A nursing home went out of business in this town, and a rehabilitation center came in and leased it. The neighbors sent a representative that they hired, and they negotiated with the applicant. And they got more out of the applicant by negotiating. The center still exists. The center was going to exist. It was, the handwriting was on the wall, there was no stopping it. But it was mitigated significantly. Fences, walls, shrubs, screens, sidewalks. I mean, I could go on. So to answer your question, what good is this meeting? If you listened to our chair giving you guys a suggestion, the good of this meeting would be for you guys to all meet in the parking lot, swap names, pick somebody that's going to lead you as a group, get ahold of this developer and say, look, we hate your project, but if you're going to do it, can you do this, 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 and this, and this for us? They may thumb their nose at you, but at least you ask. At least you ask. And if you settle it amongst yourself, if come in here and getting excited, I can remember when Rosebrook Road, one lady came here, and every week that she got a chance to speak, she'd sit right there and she'd say, you guys are going to have blood on your hands. Clean. Sorry, folks, you can get emotional, but it doesn't solve the problem. So let emotions, put emotions aside and use logic and listen to the recommendation that was given to you by somebody that's seen many of these projects. That's my, that's my answer to your-
Thank you.
And I yield.
Your name for it.
Alexis Rivera, and I live at 3 West Street, directly across from them.
Yeah.
When's the last time have you been to your property?
This is an answering question session.
Never go to that property, never.
Ma'am, ma'am, we-
Never.
Ma'am, you can't talk to the lady.
I can do whatever I want.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
First of all-
You take that attitude, and we will have you escorted out of this building.
There are single families, single families. And you want to put 20 units on what?
Time out.
You talk to the board.
If you can't speak civilized-
Oh, civilized.
You'll have to leave that room now, or I have you removed.
There's nothing to be civilized, you guys don't care what we're saying.
Ma'am, we are listening to each one of you.
No, you're not.
Ma'am, and the recommend, can you get off the chair, please? You're done.
Oh, I'm done?
Ma'am, we're not listening to-
Really?
Ma'am.
So I can't voice my opinion on what I feel like? Because I live directly across? I have a daughter that has Down Syndrome, and she's autistic. And you're going to put all these units in a little property? So my voice don't matter?
Of course your voice matters.
No, it doesn't.
Not with yelling and pointing fingers.
Clearly it doesn't. I object to this.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Sorry, I have a lot to say, but I am a taxpayer. So we made an example, you made an example-
For the record, your name again.
Yes, my name is Yolanda. I want, I want to talk about the example you made. You stated that, that the board shut, that the board shut down. There was a nursing home that got closed, that got closed down, and another organization took over. Indian Neck Road, I just want to let you know that I am an employee of Gosnell, which purchased that property, and it will be up and rising in January. That neighborhood is nothing compared to the neighborhood here. On Indian Neck Road, there are three family homes on that neighborhood that proposed. Only three. In this neighborhood here, there's over 30 families, maybe 28. Somebody said it earlier. So the comparison between Indian Neck Road and how the state shut it down, and, you know, you guys shut it down, you can't even compare Indian Neck Road to West Street, to West Wareham. Because there's, there is three or four families that contested against the facility. The facility is going to be here, but it is going to take the homeless off the streets. I know it has anything to do with West Wareham in this, this building that's going on. And you know what? People, it's going to be okay, it is. But it's not a comparison. We have to get a better comparison than Indian Neck Road versus West Wareham. It's the truth. It's not, it wasn't a good one, sorry.
Ma'am, ma'am.
It wasn't a good one.
Okay. It's compared for, when he tell you for mitigation, that's why he's comparing you for. That mean when the neighbors negotiated, they get something. That's what he's comparing, it's completely different project, of course.
You acknowledge the power of three homes, and you feel that your 30 is less powerful? You don't speak well of yourself, ma'am.
Whatever, that's okay.
Sir, name and address, please.
My name's April Savery, and I live at 2 Bellatera Circle, which is right beside them. I want to know what the property value is going to go. Are we going to lose property value in our houses? I'm not ready to retire, I'm not ready to sell my house. We live on a private circle, which is private. Are we going to end up with having people turning around, using our circle for parking? We don't have a fence anymore. We've had issues with the neighbors with dogs coming in our neighborhood and actually coming right up to my front door and scaring away male people. And then the trash and all that, so I was just wondering.
Well, anything with a site plan review, when we do the site plan review, this what, these things come in, the fencing, the trash, the dumpster, the gate, all these things will come into play when, when this happens, when we continue the site plan.
Okay, and how many times was the proposal turned down from, what was I asking?
How many times they submitted something to the state and they got turned down?
Yeah, how many times?
Overturned at the state.
How many times 40Bs were turned down?
No, how many times did you guys said no, and the state overturned overall?
Yeah, how many times?
Dead once on Red Brook Road, and they said no, and the applicant won. And that's only switching it from rental to purchase. Not even to approve it.
Mr. Chair, can I say something?
Yes.
I don't know if a lot of you may know me or may not know me, but as far as this board goes, I, and I understand, I fully understand the project and the shock and everything, and I can, I know your neighborhood. I've been doing business in your neighborhood, I know the people in the neighborhood. But there's not a board that fights harder for your neighborhood than this board. I've fought, and I voice, and I use as much as I can until the lawyers take it away from me. So please understand, don't attack all of us up here. We are, we know that the state will step on our throat and say tough shit, and do whatever they want. This is our only chance that you can get any of our, any considerations or any, what am I looking for? Conditions, we can put conditions on anything.
Put on that plan.
Are you guys coming here? This gives us energy. I've got a list here, these are your names and what you were concerned with. And I take the time, and we go over this, even though it doesn't seem like we're sensitive. It doesn't, sometimes you just look at a board in the town and you just assume that we don't care. But please, don't do that to this board. I, we listen, we take into your consideration, and we try very hard to try and get your considerations talked, discussed, or put in. But at some point, these people will take it above our heads. So if you fight too hard too quick, you're going to take our, our rights away. That's all I'm trying to say, and please, just take a deep breath. This is a very serious board. We try very, 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 very hard to get as much out of the, the projects for the community as we can. But our hands, as the chairman said, and as Mr. Akabachi said, at some point, the door gets slammed, and it's tough crap. And I don't think you want to be there. So please, everybody just kind of consider, take a deep breath, taking what he said, what the chairman said, and what was going on, and try to work with it. But at the same time, you've got to understand, this board is not your typical board, and I'll state that, and I'll swear to it. If anybody has followed this board in the last, since I've been on it, Wareham goes first, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not caring about any dollar. I don't care who's going to get richer than me. All I care about is the people who live here. If you've got something to say, this is why you come up here and say it, and that's why it's appreciated. But again, these are your names, these are your concerns. And I don't sit here just thinking, oh, blah, blah, blah. I listen. So doesn't Mr. Conti, Mr. Larson, Mr. Akabachi, and the chairman. We all try to help out everybody. That's all I got to say now. But please, understand this board. This is a different board.
Thank you. Sir, your name and address?
Dan Savery, 2 Bellatera Circle. So I fully understand that you guys are going to fight for us. It just seemed that when you made comments, understand, and not, you didn't make a comment early, but when you made a comment saying that we should negotiate because the state's basically going to overturn your ruling, right? So it makes you, you're telling us, basically you're scared to say no, right? That's kind of, you're putting that out there, even though you said you haven't made a vote or decision yet, I get that. But those comments, and again, you're trying to give us all the information, which I appreciate, but you basically seem like, what, regardless of what you guys say, the state's going to overturn, and then that's why you guys are scared to say no anyways, or object to this. I also have one more question. Like, does the zoning, the frontage of that property even allow for those three units? Like, in the zoning?
You're done?
Yes, sir.
That's what 40B comes in. They're allowed to overrule all the zoning rules. Parking, setback, proximity of wetland, frontage, square footage, density. This is what 40B is. Are we afraid to say no? Are we afraid to say no? We're afraid for you. Not for us. I believe none of us lives in that neighborhood. Not, we don't care. Of course we care. It's our town. We pay a lot of taxes. I pay personally a lot of taxes in this town. And I care, so is everybody else. We are afraid for you. We can't go in up with an attitude and say no. I guarantee you, we will, you will lose. Because that's your neighborhood. You will lose. We're trying to do like Rich said, the best for you. So that's why it's best to negotiate this deal. The only chance we might have, and still is not a guarantee, if we can get certification-- What's that?
Only chance we might have is to call the news, protest this, right?
Sir, uh, well, we'll, we'll have the chance. The only chance we'll have, it's a good chance, if we made the ten percent after we get the list, that we can say no, for the sake of the neighborhood. But that doesn't, we're not any clear. They could still go to the state and appeal. You know, in best cases, in these cases, the best one works when you negotiate with the applicant. But you don't have to. You don't have to. But make no mistake, when we say, and when time come and we feel that we pressured by you and by the rules or whatever, to say no, when it comes back to you hard, you have to understand, we tried. Okay?
Yes, sir. So, you know, I, so I agree. But I think that we also have our, um, opinions we can voice to the state itself too. So we have, you know, whether it's either through petition or through our own representatives, right? So, um, we'll, uh, obviously take that up with our own representatives to fight for the state for us too as well. But, um, I also want to consider, can, can we request, and I don't know if I can or not, but in environmental study too, that area again. I know that with the fortyB, like you stated, it over, overruns that. But if we're gonna get into the engineering of the property and, um, I'd like to see what, because again, I was, um, told that it was wetlands behind my house. And literally, you see that line that goes up on the right side. That's where my property is. And if that's wetlands and how they're not considered wetlands or, could just be--
You get them.
So I just wanted to know if--
When time comes, when time comes. Another bridge they have to cross. They have to go signed off on conservation. If they are within a hundred feet of the wetland, conservation will call in for a hearing and will notify all of you and you'll be here--
Okay, so we will get notified?
Of course. If they're not within a hundred feet, you won't hear from them. They will sign off on it. Without even calling you. If they have more than a hundred feet.
A hundred, a hundred feet from the structure or?
Wherever they doing work, if they're a hundred feet away from the wetland flag, they don't have to have a hearing. You understand? If they say a ninety, they have to have a hearing. And they could go up to thir-- that's fortyB, thirty feet. Thirty feet to wetland they could go. That's how close they could get to. But that will be different hearing, different board.
So it just seems like we're waiting on the, the ruling whether or not it's, uh, we made our ten percent on the, in this town, correct?
But this is your best bet right now. But it doesn't clear us from, from the no, you know?
Right. So the board's waiting for that right now though, right?
We're gonna wait from the gentleman and from Mr. Farady to get us these. I, I'm a strong believer, even Mr. Farady said has to be certified. I disagree. I believe the minute they apply, it counts. Although all the application in Wareham that's been applied for, it's been approved. So that definitely can, can count. Even though they're not under registered because it takes time. It takes a year or two. You can't just say, oh, it's not because it's not registered. This I am sure of. So we're just hoping, because that'll be a good, good start for the neighbors if this, we can achieve that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the time.
Going back, yes, ma'am? Name and address, ma'am. Again.
I'm at E. Rollin' Hill. Um, question, how did we get to this point where they're in front of the zoning board?
How do they get to the point? They go to the office, they apply and they go, and they get any agenda. They get sent to you notices to the abara and of the abara. Abara and to the abara or the three hundred feet radius. So if you're the third abara, you didn't, you don't have to get a card. Abara to the abara or three hundred feet radius. Okay, so if you're gonna say some of you didn't get notice, some of them, you don't, they don't have to send you a notice. And it goes on the paper, it goes on the board in the town. It gets advertised everywhere. They go to the selectmen. Selectmen give recommendation. They go to the state. The state approves them. I have the letter in front of me. And the selectmen don't have to approve them to come before us or approve them. It's irrelevant what, if we say yes or no. It's irrelevant, all of us. If we say yes or no, all, at the end is the state.
No, that, that makes sense. Um, I was under the impression that they have already been denied by another board. And that is why that they are now here in front of this board? So I was curious about that.
Wait, I mean, may, maybe different board deny them. It's irrelevant to our board.
Okay.
My other--
Yeah, I know.
Um, my other question was, so about the affordable housing. So if this project, say we weren't at the ten percent and this project's not gonna get us to the ten percent, like, what are the chances of, like, if it, if it's going to cause more harm than good? It's not gonna get us to that percentage that they're saying, oh, well, you're not at that ten percent. Well, we're not gonna be at that ten percent even if this project goes up. But you're gonna be causing so much more strain on a neighborhood. And I'm just seeing like, human to human, like, like several people have said, oh, I don't live in that neighborhood. Like, imagine if this was your neighborhood. Like, I even think of the school. Our school is at full capacity. Where are the children that are gonna be moving into these buildings?
I hate to tell you, we cannot discuss school. That's discrimination.
No, I know. I'm just saying, these are the things that go through my mind as a Wareham resident who has children here. And I'm like, and you have--
You have reason, but unfortunately, this is not how the state works. You have to change the rules with the state. Talk to your representative to change the rules of fortyB. We don't make the rules. We follow them. Ju-- I want to stop you for a second. Josh?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think, um, through you to Dean, I think it might be helpful for the public to understand actually how you got to the zoning board in Wareham. You know, the process of getting here, that, all, all the steps that happened before you even stepped foot in Wareham. I think that may be helpful if you could, uh, explain on that process as well.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So let the gentleman speak. Go ahead, sir.
Um, as I mentioned earlier, I'm a housing consultant.
Just to us, sir. You don't have to--
Pot in my back, Ted.
That's okay.
I've been doing this for over thirty years. My whole life career has been affordable housing. I believe in affordable housing and it's not to ruin neighborhoods or ruin communities. But it is to provide people with housing rental or, which is affordable. So people then can provide, you know, good educations, go to good schools, um, basically be able to pay for insurance, health insurance. That's the goal. The reason fortyB exists is over fifty years ago, the major cities were, had the bulk of affordable housing. So the legislation says, well, that's not consistent with what we believe our, our Commonwealth should be. So they came out with that each community should have ten percent of the housing affordable. That's over fifty years old. About fifteen years ago, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, it was put back to the people of the Massachusetts to vote whether or not fortyB stays or go. It stayed, obviously. So our process under fortyB, and I know people say, as you said, Mr. Chairman, the majority of the people who get denied, applicants get denied, go up to the Housing Appeals Committee, will win. Because what the Housing Appeals Committee looks at is the need for affordable housing in your community versus the other concerns, safety, health and welfare. The lower on the scale and the lower than your number, the more the need for affordable housing. As you get to ten percent, it equals out. You have done a great job in this community, and I've been before this community in the past on fortyBs, and you've done a good job getting them done. The reason why, and I understand that you believe you're at ten percent. So once it's at ten percent, you can get some relief from doing it. The process for us is first, it is a two-step process. Actually, it's a three-step process. The first step is we have to request from either Department of, um, excuse me, Mass Housing or the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, used to be DHCD. We have to get a project eligibility, eligibility letter. What that letter says, and basically what it does, is saying the state's looking at the property, not taking in the neighbors' concerns from a property standpoint alone. This property can handle the number of units being proposed. It appears to be financially feasible. And it does help raise the ten percent letter. Once we receive that, and we did have, we had a meeting with the, the neighbors at one that was in a part of the project eligibility. That was our, at our doing. We also had, when the state came down for mass housing, the project eligibility visit. The town was given the option to write a letter. The town was given the option to come to the, to, um, the meeting. And the town was, um, had the option of having other people come to the meeting. It's not a public hearing, so it was not noticed. Um, the town did come to, uh, the, the meeting, um, the day we were out there with Mass Housing. So once we got that letter, we then have an opportunity to submit to the town a comprehensive permit application through the zoning board of appeals. The idea of that is you go to one board for basically preliminary approval of our concept. This is not, if we get a approval from the town, this is not something you're gonna see happening in your neighborhood the next day. Because after that, we still have to do all the due diligence, get all other, any state approvals or any other requirements. We have to go through and come up with, get, finish our engineering drawings, finish our architectural drawings. And basically what usually happens is the conditions of the app, um, the approval that's issued by the town or the city, uh, we have to show that we can meet them before we pull the bur, building permit. That's a step within itself. Same path is we have to go back to mass housing and, um, basically get final approval, which shows that we have, uh, done everything the town required under the comprehensive permit. Plus there's other requirements like deed restrictions, other affordability requirements and so forth that we have to do. Then after that, um, we then can start construction. Prior to renting out, we have to do a fair, affirmative fair housing marketing plan and a lottery plan, which is very regulated through the state because of fair housing laws. The good part of that is the town can basically set aside, as you all know, seventy percent of the units for local residents. And you could do preferences. We've already been talking with some of the veteran groups around and looking to provide some of the, these units for veterans. But that's an option that the town has. If you want to have school teachers, you want to have old retirees, whatever you want, as long as it fits in the guidelines, the state will allow you to do that. Once it's up and running, the process is we have to have any residents market or affordable. Because remember, fifteen of these units are market rate units. Which means is, while you have the market rate units, they're paying a high rental price. If they're paying market prices, they're not gonna put up with bad residents, whether they're affordable or not. And each year, we have to certify that all the affordable units are still income certified, that there is no issues. Same thing with the market. So as long as you keep, keep both market and affordable equal and treat them fairly, you can do credit checks, criminal checks, which we do. Um, you do landlord's checks, you do other sorts of checks to make sure that one, you're not allowing anybody in the development that shouldn't be in the development. And just as much as you're all concerned with your family, the residents who live there are concerned about their families too. So that's the process.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Um, okay, there was a couple of things. I'm trying to even think of. Um, so yeah, I don't think that this is so much an issue that Wareham doesn't want affordable housing or to, that we wouldn't welcome. It's more that this neighborhood is just not the right neighborhood. I don't understand why it has to be in a one point three acre lot. That, there's so many other places that it could go. And you would not see any of us here fighting it. Maybe there would be others. The second thing, you're talking about, oh, well, the, the five, the, the other fifteen people, they're going to not allow that. Do they have a say? Because you're telling our entire neighborhood we have no say. But yet those neighbors are gonna have a say of who those, their tenants are, who their neighbors are? I don't think so. And the, the people there now is, are, like, they rent, I'm assuming it's a rental now. Are they checked? Do you, any of that stuff that you said that you're gonna do, has that ever been done? So I, to me, that's all, that sounds great, but it's not reality. And I think it's easy, again, when you say it's not your neighborhood, it's not your town, that it's gonna be great. Oh, it's gonna get, great, kids can go to the school. What about the kids in our school now? Our kids that are out of school that's at full capacity? So they don't matter? So they should be in classrooms with forty, fifty kids? When there are plenty of other places in the planet, in Massachusetts, where this building would probably fit much nicer? And then those kids in those units would actually probably have a yard to play in.
Thank you. Jim?
Is somebody out in the hall talking or something? There's some kind of jabbering going on and I'm having a hard time. Who's doing all the talking?
He can't--
Tell them to take it down the hall or something. I can hear the people in the hall better than I can hear the people on the microphone.
That's fine.
And Josh? They're done? Thank you. Thank you for going out and, because I, it was making it very hard for me to listen to two conversations at once.
Hi, my name is Sharon.
One second, ma'am. He wanted to say something before.
So I, I just wanted to, um, to say, a, a, as a word of warning, um, based on some comments made by the last speaker. In the real estate world, fortyB is referred to as the anti-snob law. And when you say, I'm for affordable housing, but not in this neighborhood, that's exactly why fortyB exists.
Ma'am, time out. Ma'am, ma'am, sit down.
That's exactly why fortyB exists. I caution you folks about the words you use when you speak officially against this project. Not to this board. This board's kind of teflon to it now. But if you're gonna go up against the state and say, we object to this because we don't think this is the right neighborhood, you just turned their ears right off. They just turned on the off button. They stopped listening the minute you said what that, minute that came out of your mouth, the anti-snob law, the people that protect it, said, go ahead, keep speaking.
So, uh, anyway, you're done, Jim?
That's what you got.
So, so does, you know, this, this meeting is recorded and it goes on record. And there's somebody taking due in minutes. So like I said, get to the point from beginning. Don't point finger. Watch what you say. There's a, once you say it, you can't take it back. And like Jim said, these are bad things when it goes to the hearing to the state. They will listen to each comment somebody said. Trust me, they listen to all of us. They review every word said. So watch what you say, hold your anger down and be specific. And don't try to elaborate too much. Just consider you in court. I don't know if some of you have been into court. Unfortunately, you don't have a lawyer that tell you here, stop, don't say this. But you have to learn to stop. You want to say something?
Uh, just a question to, to Josh. As I believe I was told before, you got the ten percent. Once we reach the ten percent, that's only good until the census comes back out again. It's a vicious cycle. FortyB has got a grip on the town of Wareham.
Sure is.
It just, we, we can always be happy. It's one of the things I'm happy about because I am concerned, as a lot of you, about how jam-packed the schools are. But the problem is, is that they figured out, they'll stop it for this year. But then the census comes out next year and it's up and we lose our ten percent again and they just start coming back in. It's just a vicious cycle. So please, just, they, the safe harbor may be hit, but give it a year and it, you can forget it again.
Correct.
And it stinks.
Correct what Richard's saying. So it's a vicious cycle, not only for Wareham, for every town and city in Massachusetts. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add to your comment. You're correct. And in the meantime, when, before the census come out, for every unit you're building affordable, how many unit you're building market?
It's a catch twenty-two.
Because then that number goes up. It's simple math, right? So while you, you built affordable housing and that's getting you to the ten percent based on the current number.
So you get four affordable and you get sixteen that aren't affordable. And now you're fighting sixteen more to, to delete the ten. I get it. It's--
Yeah. And I, I know a lot of communities are working to housing production plans you guys all know about, getting to your certified, slow down the growth. But unfortunately, until, like you all said, until you get to that ten percent and you make progress continuously, it's an uphill battle. No doubt. Like I said, I've done numerous of these in the state. You have my resume. You've seen how many are done. You see how many units I've been involved with. For thirty-five years, I thought this problem would get resolved thirty years ago. I'd be out of a job. Unfortunately, affordable housing is still problematic.
Anyway.
So a lady wants to speak.
Yes, who wants to speak?
There's a lady been very patient.
Oh, sorry, ma'am. Name and address, sorry.
And, and we respect your patience. Thank you very much.
I was looking at the loud one in the back. I was looking at the loud one in the back.
My name is Cheryl Tavas Merritt. I live at two Open Hearth Drive, West Wareham. I'm a prior resident of thirty-three West Street, West Wareham, Mass. That's where I grew up. I don't know if this is redundant, if it's already been asked, but how was this particular area chosen? How was this particular land chosen?
Somebody put some land up for sale and they decided they wanted to buy it.
Simple.
Um, the reason I ask that is because I have some, well, my grandparent used to own that property. And to hear this guy saying he's going to demolish it, it's kind of upsetting to me, but. Um, so, and I don't remember who these two people are up front. I don't know if they said their name and address or whatever, like everyone else had to.
I did say their name and address.
Well, I didn't hear it because at that time everyone was chit chatting.
We, we could ask them to say their name and address again, but other than that, keep going.
Okay, that'd be great. And um, I understand what you guys were trying to say about the way you speak during the hearing and everything. And I totally agree because fighting isn't going to resolve it. And I'm, will the community be able to afford some type of legal representative when they have all these meetings and stuff?
There is, there is some. But unfortunately, for the neighbors again and for the town, the state, we've done it before. They give us money to have legal representation.
They give the state?
The state gives the town.
The town.
Legal uh, uh, money for legal representation. But the attorney they give us is, I always pro forty B and all what it does with us, we do better without him. All what he say, give, give, give.
What about the community itself if they all got together?
I don't know. There's something you gotta ask the community development, selectmen. If you could hire your own lawyer, but I doubt it, they'll give you a lawyer for you.
Well, they're, they're entitled to go hire a lawyer.
Yeah, you're entitled, of course.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, you can. That you can, but for like from grant, you have to ask around.
There's fifty of you. If you each put up a hundred thousand, you got a half a billion dollars. You can go fight them.
Anyway, uh, for, to answer you.
Sorry, Mr. Speaker.
Ma'am, 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 quiet, please. We gotta get through this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It seems like.
Ma'am, ma'am, you can, ma'am, ma'am, if you want to speak, you gotta come forward. Ma'am, please, your name again. Ma'am, ma'am, your name again, please, for the. No, the lady on.
Angela Natella.
Joshua Natella.
Okay, and your address?
One eighty-one Union Street, Waymouth.
Waymouth, Mass. What, twenty-one Union Street?
One eighty-one.
One eighty-one Union Street, Waymouth, Mass. Okay?
Yes.
That's where they live, in Waymouth.
Okay, now I don't understand this. They live in Waymouth, but they're selling the house in West.
They have the right to, yes.
Oh, I didn't know.
They could do whatever they want, just like you can. Yes, sir.
Let me clarify. They are currently own the property. They bought the property in the past. The entity is different because of financial reasons and how you have to set this up as a single purpose entity. It's legal BS, but, but they own the property.
Understand how it works, sir. And they have the right to do whatever they want. That's irrelevant.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Again, name and address. Again, unfortunately, I have to re-ask you for the records because somebody's typing.
Christopher Buckingham, eleven West Street. Um, I've got a question for the applicants. Last year, around September, they had a proposal in the town of Pembroke for the same exact thing, forty B, twenty units. I know it might not seem relevant to the board, but it is. I'm just wondering, um, why did that project got denied?
We, I don't have an answer for you.
I'm asking the applicants.
This is, I, I, I mean, I give him the chance to answer if he wishes, but I don't recommend the answers, but he can, sir.
Yes, thank you, Chip.
It's irrelevant to him, but if he's generous enough, he could give you the answer.
Yes, uh, first of all, we didn't get denied. We got a comprehensive permit for twenty units on a property less this size, which in a town similar to yours. So that's an excess one. We're working now on the construction documents and hopefully be breaking ground next, um, next April.
So they didn't get denied. That's your answer.
Well, he didn't say his name and address.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
He didn't say his name and address before he spoke.
Ma'am, he already.
Yeah, okay, but every time we get up there, we need to say.
Ma'am, listen to me, because he's the applicant.
It applies to you guys only. Nobody wants to say.
Ma'am, listen, listen, we, we're giving you the courtesy to listen, but you being rude to us. We understand you frustrated, but you being a little rude.
I'm not rude.
The rules states.
It was rude when he said Trump. What does Trump got to do with this?
Well, and I told him, it's withdrawn.
Thank you. It's, but it is, it is being recorded.
That, that's fine. And it's withdrawn from the statement. It's fine. Sir.
Yes, uh, all that information is on the application that I submitted to the town. I'll be very clear. My name is Dean Harrison. I live at fifty-nine Lockwood Ave, Attleboro, Massachusetts. And um, it's right there in the application. Nothing's hidden, so.
All right, any, the board, while we discussing thing, if somebody wants to say something.
Somebody with their hand up. If you want to speak, just walk up to the microphone. We'll recognize you, sir.
It's probably better. There's a lot of people. Unfortunately, name again and address.
No problem. Sidney Pires, fifteen West Street, West Wareham. Well, you said that, remember initially I had said that the applicant had put an informal letter with six units. I'm not speaking for everybody in my neighborhood, but like you said, if we all were to get together and maybe come up with some resolution as far as the density, the six units sounds more appropriate for that size lot, meaning maybe three duplexes. There's duplexes on a neighborhood, it would fit into a neighborhood facade.
You see, you're starting to think now.
Yeah, I've always, I've always been thinking. That'd be more appropriate. Their initial thing with the informal letter was six units. I'm not speaking for the whole neighborhood. We were all going to have to get together and decide whether we're going to continue fighting the twenty units or if they want to change it to the original six with that informal letter. Otherwise, we're going to fight it right to the end with the twenty units.
That's, that, you see, but that's good. That's a good start, you know, you're getting, you know.
And this Pembroke project, the lot is slightly larger than, not that I think it's one point four two acres, but anyway, that's.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I just want to clarify for the record, we've never presented a proposal with only six units. We originally met with the town and spoke with the town and Affordable Housing Trust to do roughly sixteen plus units. Uh, we do have a lot of support from the Affordable Housing Trust. It was dated last year, but it is, uh, they put right in here that uh, this development is clearly aligned with our mission and will provide a high quality rental housing alternative for residents and business employees. You know, uh, thank you for your time to review the sponsored application as well, considering our support on the project. And that is part of the application we submitted. When we met with the town, excuse me, when we met with the abuders out at the site unofficially, there was never discussion about six units. So I just want to clarify that for the record.
All right, in the meantime, I'd like you to go back to your client and discuss. Don't need an answer from you now. Maybe tweak it down a bit, the project. If you can come up with a reasonable number. You don't have to, but probably to accommodate the neighbor, try to work out with them. I know probably six extreme and twenty's extreme, maybe you guys could meet halfway. That's a suggestion. You don't have to listen to us and they don't have to listen to us. Thank you, sir.
And, and, and I think it's, if you, through you, I think it's important for you folks to understand, this is a long drawn out process for this applicant. This applicant probably has over a year invested in this already, two years invested in this already. And um, they'll probably be in front of this board for, I don't know, six months?
Probably.
Six months, maybe. I've seen some of these applications be in front of a board for eighteen months, so. And in the process, it's called a site plan review. And in, if everything that the town requires of this project is deemed reasonable by the state, and in the end, the applicant says to do all these things and shucks, darn it all, now it's financially not feasible. That can happen too, but it takes time. And coming in here and like I said, the woman in a prior project that kept telling us we had blood on our hands, that passion doesn't, it just, try, try to use a little bit of a throttle. If you can't control yourself, then hire somebody to speak for you because that'll serve you much better. Thank you.
And I hate to tell you, you think the state look out for you, they don't. That's the truth. The state does not look out for any of us.
They're not looking out for West Wareham. They are not looking out for West Wareham.
Or for all of us. That's my opinion, anyway. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Hello, my name is Brendan LaHome, one Candle Paper Lane. This doesn't directly affect me, but they are a stone's throw away from my house. Uh, I do know the area very well. It is very small. It is extremely small.
It is.
It is a maybe lane and a half on a good day. I have lived in this town since nineteen ninety-seven and I have seen this place get overdeveloped like crazy. I used to live in Agawam Lake Shore Drive. I don't know if you remember it all, all sand dunes. I remember drove my first dirt bike out there as a kid. One day, all the dunes are gone, now it's housing. It was crazy. To go along with Mr. Pires, um, even if they shrink it down, would there be consideration of ADA over the forty B? I feel like we need more ADA in this town than we do forty B. Um, that is my two cents. Again, guys, I'm with you guys. I'm dead against it. But if we come to some conclusion, maybe some ADA, I don't know if you guys are for that, but it's too small. It's far too small.
The neighborhood's too small.
The neighborhood is far too small.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yolanda Rosario. I just want to apologize for my outbursts. It is very emotional and you know, us.
We understand.
What? Who are you? There's, there's a, there's a person that's not in the room tonight taking notes and she's trying to put names with the comments.
No problem.
That's why we asked you to restate your name.
No problem, no problem. Smile. You'll get better, you know.
That's okay.
Thank you. So I apologize. My name is Yolanda. I live at four A Rolling Road.
Last name too.
Rosario, Hampton.
Thank you, Yolanda.
I just want to apologize.
I want to tell you something.
What?
Time out, so everybody understand. When we start the hearing, they said their names. There's a lady sitting behind a computer taking note, they're doing minutes. They don't change back and forth. When you come back and speak, she don't know you were there before. So that's why you have to say your name again. So to say Yolanda came back up and she said so because to document it. That's all. We, we're not here to give you a hard time.
May I say something, Yolanda Rosario?
Yes.
You didn't say your name. No, I'm only teasing, but I do apologize for the outbursts. We all are just concerned about it.
We understand.
But you did say that they have, the applicants have owned the property, put a lot of investments in it the last year. They've been owning the property and this has been extended. All I'm saying is they have owned the property for a year. Did they know that the property has all kind of garbage in front of it?
I don't know if that, excuse me.
No, I just wanted, just wanted to know because it's only, wait, it's only two units. And if, if they can't handle two units, I understand they're going to hire managers, but sometimes people slack on their responsibilities, you know, I, I, think about it.
Yeah, what, I don't know if they own the property or if they control, if they have it under agreement.
You said they invested.
A lot of times, these projects will come and they'll throw a pittance down. They tie it up under an agreement and the agreement is subject to permits. If they don't get their permits, they don't have to perform. So they could, I don't know who, you know.
Who owns the property? Well, I apologize.
It's moot. To, to the application, it's moot because again, we're, no, you, you, you don't need to apologize.
It's rough. You guys have a hard job, but we're just trying to protect our neighborhood and I'm sure you guys are too.
We get it.
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you for coming back up and, and.
I get emotional, honey.
No, I saw one on, I saw.
You know.
I saw one on Facebook today and the woman said that her, um, her ability to control her mouth with her emotions was better than her ability to control her facial expressions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, they own the property since two thousand nineteen, if that makes you happy. Since, yeah, March twenty-nine ninety.
So she makes a point. Maybe they ought to make a stab it.
Hi, my name is Wendy Sullivan. I live on nine West Street. Um, I do, I wonder if I can ask this question. Are, can we as a town impose that they put in sidewalks? I mean, if you're going to have people that are low income or disabled, I mean, there's no sidewalks in that neighborhood. And it's over, and also if they rely on public transportation, it's over a mile to walk to the bus stop.
Right.
I mean, I think that would be in hindrance to somebody that's living there that relies on public transportation, especially during the winter months, there's no sidewalks and how are they going to get to that bus stop?
I know. You, you can ask, however, there's what they call financial feasibility. That they get to a point, if you make it so hard for them, or again, the state stops and says, well, that's too much money. It's not financially feasible. You can't ask them to do this. We would, in our site plan, I don't mind asking for a sign, slow down children playing, um, sign, take a left, take a right, stop. We don't, we'll ask for those and I'm sure the project can afford, the developer can put those signs, but putting sidewalks, they'd be running back to HUD, to the housing authority and say, listen, they make it unfeasible. And this is a bad way to approach the housing, to make it unfeasible. It become, the state looks at it like we're trying.
Well, I just see that. I'm trying to help an individual.
So they go harder on us.
Well, I think I'm trying to make it easier for someone that is disabled.
It'd be nice to have sidewalks.
I have a family member that's disabled and can't walk out.
But pointing sidewalks there would cost as much as the project.
Well, how are they, how are they going to get to a bus stop if they have to walk? You know, it's just, it's kind of unsafe. It's unsafe. But also the other thing is like our mailboxes are all on the right side. And as it is now, we have a neighbor that constantly has work being done in the post office. We called the, um, post office and they said they do not have to get out of their vehicles, so you'll have to pick up your mail. So they won't stop if there's a car in front of our mailbox.
Yeah.
So that means we don't get mail and all of our boxes are on the right side.
But they have to deal with postal master. That's something they have to deal with.
Well, I'm just saying, can they also, can we also impose like how many, if there's fifteen units and two, it's a two family household, that's already thirty cars, right? Thirty spots.
Yeah.
So I think the parking, can they impose that there, um, the people that live there, our tenants there that have to like park and they can't park on the street?
We could, we could say that.
Yeah, and I just, yeah, I just, I'm just saying, I think the unit is going to be too large to, and you're going to put people in an uncomfortable situation if they can't even park at where they live. And now they have to find a parking spot on the street.
Well, the town has rules, how many parking per unit.
Okay.
For one bedroom is one and a half parking, for two is two parking, for three bedroom is two parking. So as long as these applies, it's fine. Now, they park in the street, that's speculation. We can't say, oh, they're going to park in the street, just like you can park. Who lives there, go park. What are you going to do? Call the cops, have them removed, I guess.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Yes. You're done, ma'am?
Yeah, I am. I just wanted to just put out my concerns.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I want to just clarify one too, because there's been a lot of discussions about, you know, the neighborhood, what's the condition of the neighborhood now and how, you know, the feeling right now is this is going to ruin the neighborhood. A lot of what the state looks at is that when they're looking at these types of applications, you know, and they're saying, you know, we want you to do the sidewalk. The problem, what the state usually looks at and says, well, there's no other sidewalks in the area? So all of a sudden, this is just going to be a problem because of this. It's not the responsibility of the developer. Existing conditions in a neighborhood or in wherever in the community, um, they take that in consideration. Like if the state, if the town hasn't put sidewalks in there, um, very likely, unlikely would they allow that as a condition. What they might say is, all right, maybe donate something to the town so they can do a study to put sidewalks in or something like that. The other thing here to be clear is this is a private development. These roads will be private. They'd be maintained as private. They have to address the, like the post office. In all these developments, the post office will require a post box somewhere near the entrance and that will make, they won't go into the property. School buses do not go into private properties either. What they will require is that there's sufficient, or the board might require, there's a bus stop area and it's sufficient for the kids. So there's, this does not affect trash pickup. All that would be private. So there's no additional burden on the community in that sense at all. But this, that's what the top, the state looks at and people say, well, why don't they meet our request? For example, with traffic, if everybody's going fifty now and it's a thirty-five year, a thirty-five mile per hour zone, by us. per hour zone, by us saying we're going to do this, they're not going to, you know, they're going to look at the existing conditions, say, well, the problem is with the town now, not with this development causing more speeding on that road. So, it's trying, I'm just trying to explain how it's looked at, um, and that's what the state looks at.
I understand. Yes, ma'am. Name and address.
My name is Patricia Keller. I live at One Bellator Circle, which is right next to where a private little circle there. Um, he was saying that the buses do not go into private, but they do. We have a lot of special needs kids over in our neighborhood. We have children on wheelchairs. The town provides the buses for the special needs kids.
Special needs, correct.
So, we have quite a few of them. As a matter of fact, my grandson is on one, in the, in the circle that we live in. We have a little sign out there, the orange guy, you know, to slow down. We don't really need it. It's kind of a joke, because no one drives fast over in our neighborhood. We know everybody.
So, does the bus come into your private property, and does it come in on a town-approved way and pick the children up in front of your house?
It comes into the circle, because.
Yeah, but who, whose circle is it?
Ours.
It's a private, it's a private circle? It's not a town-approved way?
It is not.
Special needs, they go.
Special needs? They made an exception for you. That's cool.
Yes.
So, all you got to do is get some special needs kids in this development, and the bus will go in there, too?
Well, probably, right? But that's not the point. We have a lot of kids that are.
Really?
We have a lot of kids that are special needs, that have to walk to certain areas already. They don't come to their houses. They have to, they're picked up in front of their house. There's no sidewalks over there. It's been very laid back. Nobody's come to the town to ask for that. They haven't even paved our circles since we've lived there, and, I mean, it, it's just, it's, we don't get plowing. We don't get any of that. So, my concern is the, the children that are in that area that have special needs. There's one right across the street as well. We've got them on, I mean, they're all over the place, and these kids are out in the neighborhood. So, our concern is, if, if, if they're saying they're not going to put in sidewalks, what are we, what are we going to do for those kids? What happens?
I understand your frustration, and I hate to say it. This area, it's probably the last thing on the town's list. It's always been neglected. I have to agree with this. But unfortunately, again, I'm telling the brutal truth, this is not the problem legally. Understand? You've been put in the back burner with the town. You always get the last in town. I know for a fact, paving, clean, anything, you are the last one in the list in the town. Unfortunately, I don't know why. Maybe it goes far, I don't know. But regardless, that does not make the applicants responsibility. Do you understand?
So, we, he said that we were notified about this before any of it. Was it in the town paper, or was it in?
Well, how far you live?
Kind of notification.
How far you live?
How far do I live?
From the project, from the property?
Um, less than 100 feet.
Is there a bar between you?
I did not get notified at all.
Okay, is there a, how many per, houses between you and them?
There's two.
Yeah, there you go. There's two.
One house.
One house? You're the third?
There are two. We're one. And I never was notified at all.
We'll have to check the list.
Check and see if One Bellator Circle is on there, and, um, we weren't notified at all.
We'll check it, please. Uh, we'll get on it. Like I said, it's a bar to the a bar.
I did see, I did see the cards in here. I just don't know a page. Yeah. I, I, I like some of the people that come in, and they give us a little appendix where everything is. It makes it a little easier.
Yeah, you were sent. You probably never picked up the card.
Where was it sent to?
Whatever that town assessors have you at.
Sonia can tell you. Where was it sent, Sonia?
One Bellator, Patricia Keller, 2005.
Keller, yeah.
Okay.
I never received anything. But you said, um, the town as a whole was notified, too?
They put it on the paper, and they put it, not the whole, they put it on the paper. They put it, the board, the town, you know, the board.
Yep.
They put it there, and they put it on the paper twice. So, it goes, trust me, it's been advertised, and a bar to the a bar, or 300 feet.
So, if you look, if you look at the Wareham paper, when you pick up the free paper, and you get in, you get to the, to the back after the obituaries.
Yep.
I spend a lot of time, I pick that paper up every week to see what the projects are coming. The planning board, the select board, the board of health, they all advertise their notices there. So, if you get, I get in a habit of, I get done with the paper, and the last thing I do is I go through and I write down what zoning board of appeals, and I look at the address, so I can go out when I'm out in the town to look through it, so I don't have to wait till the last day. But all those notices are all put in the free paper. Every board has to, any advertiser, and they got to do it two times, so they'll be in there.
Sometimes mistake happens, but believe me, very rarely with those, because a lot of people check them. Anyway, are you done, ma'am, for your question? Okay, anyone else before we send these people home? All right. So, until next time, we're going to have to check the 10%. You got to work on the architect, maybe talk to the, to your clients, if they're willing to negotiate, or whatever, less numbers, or whatever. You know what to do.
Could you, um, make a comment to the neighbors about how the, the next meeting won't be advertised, and so if they want to be here, they have to pay attention, and you know what I'm talking about?
Right. We're gonna send you till December 10. Continue it to December 10.
That's fine. They'll give us some time to.
Now, let me ask you, is it, uh, from the date of application, we have, what, 100 days or 90?
No. From the, from the opening of the public hearing tonight, you have 180 days.
100?
And 80.
80? From opening the, okay.
Only if there's items still to discuss. You can't just, you know, if we said we're done with our presentation, and we presented all our information, we can officially ask for the closing of the hearing, unless you can.
All right. Okay, for everybody here, we're going to continue these public hearings. You will not get notified. So, whatever the date was set here, you're on your own to come to the hearing. I recommend December 10. Is everybody okay with this?
I'm good with that.
Let's get a motion to continue.
Same time?
6:30. Yes, sir.
Same time, same place.
Okay.
I make a motion to continue this hearing to December 10, 2025.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim to continue till December 10. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. December 10. Thank you very much, and everybody, you won't be notified, so it's on you to be here.
Yeah. So, December 10, everybody. Looking forward to see you.
We should have an answer, yes. Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. I ate two.
No. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't pass it. I ate them.
Thank you.
You know, I was busy talking, I just grabbed and started eating.
Wow.
You know, I've, I've been so, I went Saturday night to London, visited my daughter. Came back yesterday.
I'm going to keep it. Okay. You're going to keep your, you're going to keep your.
The baby was so tired.
You're going to keep your, um, yeah. Okay. Nazir, keeping yours to read?
No, I know, it's all of them.
You're Yolanda. I got you down here for four.
Sir, Yolanda? I have you down four times.
That's right. A lot of people call me that. And they call me a lot of other things, too. But you know what? In this meeting, I learned that women think I have a nice butt, because when I walked out the door, the woman said.
I like your sensitivity.
Thank you.
So, I got you down for four, I got you down for four-plus times that you spoke.
Yep, you, too.
All right, folks, we do have another hearing, so if you can.
Dude.
Yeah, I meant to watch that. I wanted to see that one.
Yeah. Do you guys already have these, I think?
No. You gave us the 40B.
And you didn't get one of these? I thought.
They didn't show up, and so we.
This is Mannix.
That's not, that's 20 units.
Wrong folder, sorry. That's why I don't have enough.
That's why there's only two. The rest of us can't.
That's all right.
Two meetings, but it's going to be.
Here we go. Sorry.
I understand. Here's your big plan. You want to make the big plans home, or you're going to?
No, no, I'm leaving them. They need a lot of work on that.
You know, by the time this thing gets done, they might just say, this ain't worth doing. But on 1.38, is the.
Is that what happened with the?
No, no, no. Wait a minute, wait a minute. This is, this is, um.
No discussion, no discussion, guys. On any case, it's still open.
If it's not still, is that what happened on a closed case? Is that a question?
It's not closed. Can't talk about it.
On a closed case.
All right, next hearing.
It's not a closed case.
No, he's talking about that previous case. No dumpster, you're talking about the.
I'm just talking about the plans.
Yeah, you can't, unfortunately. All right, next public hearing, 33-25 Frederick Mannix, 238 and 240 Sandwich Road.
Mr. Mannix, how are you, sir? I didn't think I'd ever say it, but I think I missed you. The zoning board of appeals will hold a hearing on October 22, 2025, at 6:30 PM in Room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 33-25 for a use variance, special permit or permits and variants from the requirements of Article 3, Table 330, Article 9, Table 920, and Article 16 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Frederick C. Mannix of 188 North Street, Boston, Mass., proposing construction of two buildings with eight and seven contractor bays located at 238 and 240 Sandwich Road, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Wareham Assessors Map 133, lots 1100A and 1101A in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
All right, name and addresses, please.
Patrick Troppiano, 7 Dow Ave, Wareham, Mass.
Frederick Mannix, North Street, Boston, Mass.
Counselor. Peter Titlebaum, Project Attorney, 30 Oak Street, Wareham.
Thank you. All right, let's hear it. No. It's, it's not, it's, it's not sensitive. Sir, you want us to, who wants to open the case?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start off.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, as you know, this project, uh, this property, I should say, has been the subject of a couple of different public hearings. As I stated in my cover letter, I briefly sort of recited the history here. It's currently permitted for a 80-something or 92-bed, I forget which, uh, Level 2 care facility, which would be, AKA, a nursing facility. We still have the benefit of that permit through the end of this year. But we're back before you, because Mr. Mannix has, uh, he's come up with a plan that, uh, is, is both more feasible and meets the needs of business people in the town better than what the private, what the, what the previous permit was for. And so, I, I guess I can credit you guys as being the inspiration for us coming forward with this use, because of your decision on the 2731 Cranberry Highway application, that creatively, but certainly lawfully, uh, came up with the redesignation of a property that was residential to, to industrial, so that, uh, so-called, as you put it in your decision, the contractor bays. What we're looking to use these for, we would call them more tradesman spaces, would be sort of what we're, we're looking for as a presumed primary use, but the primary use we're applying for is storage. We can't get storage until you grant us the variance for the industrial use on the property. And we're also here for a special permit for parking, so that we can establish the number of parking lots. We did receive a denial for an earlier proposal, I guess you could call it, from the building commissioner, that would have been office and retail. And so, we're, we're, those would be ancillary uses, but they would not be the primary use of what we're proposing today. And the goal here is to meet the needs of tradespeople, plumbers, electricians, people who do work, people who need space to store materials for their buildings, and also to get some of these businesses basically out of the neighborhood. There's a lot of, in Wareham, we don't have anything that really prevents somebody from parking their septic truck or their plumbing truck, or we're not looking for septic trucks, certainly. I don't think anybody wants this for that. But we don't have anything that people can use to get out of the neighborhoods and make the neighborhoods more attractive. And we think that with this proposal, which we're calling an enterprise center, we view it as a business incubator. We view it as something that will take care of the small person who's just starting out, who needs some kind of a facility but can't afford a $700,000 note to go build it themselves. So, that, that's the long and short of what we're looking for here, and we're applying in the same vein as the 2731 people did, so that we can make this happen.
Okay, very well. Now, the details of the projects, how, now, so everybody understands what we're here for. They need to use variance because in our bylaw, which we discussed many times, we don't have, we're a blue-collar town, yet we don't have any bylaw that says you could have a trade man condo, which is, like he said, counselor said, is very needed in Wareham. All the, we have plumber, carpenters, electricians in town, there'd be great use for them, and we don't have a bylaw to allow them. There's two ways if that doesn't, if the bylaw don't allow it. It mean that some people take it, if it's not listed, that means it's allowed. Some people say, if it's not listed, it's not allowed. That's where we come in. So what they're looking for, for a variance, for a use variance, to use that construction, I mean, the strip commercial area, to put these storage facilities or to make it industrial use, which is, which is also, and industrial's not allowed anymore in Wareham. You can't have a storage in Wareham. That we, we only, even in industrial zone, you need a variance. For some reason, the our bylaw don't allow storage. Although they call it storage, it's not. I don't think it's storage. I think it's a commercial space, but we'll go with the flow. If that's what the commissioner wanted, variance on a, a use variance, to allow a storage with the office, let it be. We'll call it storage with the office. On the other thing, going back to, you also seeking a relief on parking?
Yes, the building commissioner's denial letter, which was predicated on office, which is the most intensive, if you will, requiring the most spaces under the bylaw. We had, we had put in for office and retail, and those are both more intensive uses than what we have now. So what we're looking for here, however, is still to, because he did deny on parking, we're looking not only to get the special permit from you, but we're also looking to establish the number of parking spaces through you tonight as well. We think that's, that's important for the board to go on the record. It protects you in the event there's any appeals anyway, because you can point to some certain for the amount of spaces, and then if anybody wants to complain about it, they'll have a baseline upon which to complain. So I think it gives the public more opportunity to look at this and maybe ask questions. It gives you the flexibility to grant us what we're looking for, greater, lesser, however it turns out. But getting this on the record is gonna be helpful for us going forward.
Right.
And we need to do it anyway due to the denial letter, so.
I mean, if I'm looking at article line for parking, it says offices, one spot per two-fifty square feet, and storage, which you have in the back, one spot per thousand. So the way I read it, you need two parking spots for each unit. That's how I read it. Go ahead.
Fred is intimately familiar with the numbers here.
All right, let's hear it.
Okay, so I guess you're correct. And what, what we've proposed in the site plan is kind of the, the amount of parking spaces, there's more parking spaces than are required.
Right. How many, how many parking you propose?
Well, we're proposing, if you look at the parking table on sheet three of the site plan, we're proposing thirty-five spaces for number two-thirty-six and thirty-one spaces for number two-forty-two. It consists of.
And how many total units you have?
Fifteen.
Fifteen units. But, but the, the reason we're looking, well, we wanna get it on the record because we feel that the, the use.
Yeah.
Industrial use, which, in which storage is part of the industrial use. And this is how the building commissioner approached it, that these units would be used for storage. One of the things that came up in discussion, it is that the, the units can be used for many things that involve storage, such as a medical facility, you know, not, not medical facility, you know, people that put out wheelchairs and rental and stuff like that. So the storage component would be bigger in that, in that sense. A person who, say, a cabinet shop, go in there, a carpenter shop, and has cabinets and wants to store a bunch of cabinets, then they'd use more storage and less, obviously less office. There'd be a possibility to use these units for, you know, multiple configurations within the confines of the walls. So inside, internally, it's like this building here, you've done some remodeling. I've missed out a few, a few sessions here, so I got a little confused when I came here. Looks a little different. So you've done some remodeling, but you haven't changed the building. And this is the kind of, this is the kind of unit that we're talking about, and that's why we call them enterprise units. They're not strictly for tradesmen. For someone who needs, let's say, warehouse space and, as storage, but they can't afford a warehouse, we're talking to somebody who's like a manufacturer's rep, goes in there and he has a little bit of stock, and that's the kind of thing that, they're business units that I think the town could use. And we, we came up with this concept twenty-something years ago, by the way, and, and, you know, it's come around. So I think, I think it would be helpful for the town and the people in it to, that have small businesses, would be able to use this as a, as I believe Peter recommends, an incubator space, small business. Eventually, they'd move away and get, get a bigger spot. Their business grows. If it doesn't, it works. And it's a low impact. The building is much lower than the building we proposed before, and I think it's a good use. It's not a high-traffic use. It's a, it's certainly not a nuisance. There's no smoke, and it's not a body shop, anything like that. I don't think the septic tank was a good example. We're not gonna have that in there.
Can I just interject here one thing?
Yeah.
As far as the parking goes, we have a number outside, which is, what is it, twenty-four and?
Twenty-seven on.
Twenty-seven and twenty-four or something.
Twenty-four, yeah.
We're trying to establish is that we have one parking space inside, and we're planning on sprinkling the building. You know, we figure that a guy, a plumber, who has a truck, he's not gonna keep his tool truck outside, he's gonna put it inside the building. Right? So that's really a parking space. So what we're trying to establish is one space for each unit inside. And so that, that makes, that's why the number goes up to the thirty-five and, and what is it, thirty-five and whatever?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-one.
In other words, we're just trying to make sure that that's the case, that as long as we meet the criteria for parking inside, which of course we will, sprinklers, you know, the grease traps and whatever that you require, we'd be able to put there, be able to put their cars inside, and that's a parking space. So if there was somebody working there, they could certainly park their car inside, right? Or they could park the truck there at night, come in the morning, put their car inside and take off. So all we're trying to do is establish that there's one parking space inside for each unit.
One in and one out?
There'd be, it's actually three out and one in, so we'd have four altogether, which is, you know, a better deal. Look, more parking is better than no parking. So we're just trying to establish that we wanna have, be able to use one inside, because I have heard some issues that they weren't gonna let people use the inside parking, and that's ridiculous, if you ask me, especially if you're asking tradesmen to use it. I mean, I have a truck full of tools myself, right? And I certainly wouldn't put it outside. It's got $40,000 worth of tools in it. I'd put it inside. And, and so we need you to establish a space inside for each one, and that's why these, why we, we, we're asking you to give us a permit for a fixed number of parking spaces.
And the other piece, Mr. Chairman, to that is that we, of course, understand that in the process of anybody utilizing the inside in that fashion, that they're gonna have to, you know, we're gonna have to meet state fire code, which does require the sprinklers. We're gonna have to meet state environmental code, which requires us to have this, the catch, you know.
Grease traps and all that.
Grease traps and all that stuff. So, you know, we're going into this with that, and certainly, you know, we would understand if the ZBA wanted to condition the approval on meeting those requirements, you know, at the time we were, we were performing.
Absolutely. Because I just wrote down if the parking inside needed grease traps, so I guess that, that'll be one that we'll get the answer on.
But regardless, you're gonna need it. Once you have a garage door, you need a grease trap.
Yep. Just making sure that. Is it a grease trap or an interceptor, or is that one of the same? They're the same thing?
Yeah, I think, I think it's two terms.
Similar, similar. Grease trap is more for a restaurant. Well, that's why, that's why I'm asking, you know.
Yeah, we're calling oil trap.
At a restaurant, I gotta have a grease trap.
Well, in case of oil or gas.
Oil, yeah, it's a separator.
When I said oil, didn't mean restaurant oil.
Exactly.
Or grease, I didn't mean restaurant grease. Yeah, it's not real.
And it'll burn.
An automotive, an automotive fluids trap, does that cover everything that can come out of a vehicle?
Oil separators is what it is.
Yeah, it's an oil separator.
Okay, so that's good.
Anyway, it's a plumbing code, we let the plumber deal.
Right.
The, the, the only thing, the way I calculate, I went per unit. Now, the commissioner added the units. When he add the units, the offices and the stores, it kind of requires more parking for the offices, but less parking for the units. But regardless, I think you have enough, I don't think you need a variance for the parking.
Well, a special permit is what we're seeking, not a variance on the parking.
A special permit for what?
We have the right to waive amount of parking.
Right.
Zoning Board can give a special permit. Let's say you have a restaurant, you need hundred parking spaces, zoning board can give you the special permit, eighty, fifty, ten, whatever they want, whatever they think is feasible.
But we're also following the letter, Mr. Chairman, the denial letter, which said, you need a special permit for parking. And, you know, it would benefit us to have that special permit because, again, if you look at it just as storage, as you correctly stated earlier, you'd need less. But we're, we're looking for the flexibility of this, this incubator concept. We don't know, for example, that every single unit is going to be founded on the storage. In fact, we can have ancillary uses up to forty percent of the whole storage percent, which is everything.
Right.
So we could have forty percent that would actually implicate the higher parking numbers that the building commissioner talks about with his formula.
Yeah, we just need you to fix the number of parking spaces.
Oh, we could address this, but believe me, you'll never fill these parking spaces. But that's good, we'll address the issue. All right, so we have a use variance and special permit for parking, although I don't think we need it, but we'll go for it. Troy, you have a question?
I do not. I see stairs, so these are two-story structure, each unit's two? There's a, there's a mezzanine. Over the office? Yeah. For the office. Okay, so the. Essentially. It's a contractor's unit. I mean, I mean, I've seen, I've. It can be called that, but. You pull up and it's got an office in the front, there's a storage above it, and then behind it, there's a big warehouse with a garage door on the back. Yeah, but exactly, but, but what happens is it could be storage above, or it could be an office above. The interior configuration would have to meet the zoning bylaws.
Oh, so you have a second floor above the office only, or above the whole thing?
Basically, it's a, it's a, it's one-third, so it's a mezzanine.
Okay.
So the, the box, the box is twenty feet high.
Right.
And halfway through, there's a mezzanine for one-third of the space, so it's, it's a one-third.
So the office is not on the first floor?
It could be on the first floor, or it could be on the second floor.
You might encounter problem with ADA. You can't have a service on the second floor, you have to have the same service on the first floor. So in other word, if a handicapped person comes in.
Right.
You have to serve him on the first floor when he comes in, or she, like the same thing you serve upstairs.
Oh, no, I understand what you're saying. That would be if we, if we went to retail on the second floor, in other words, a public.
Applies to everything. You still have public people walking there. There's some you have to deal with the commission.
Yeah.
It's still public gonna walk in that place.
Well, no, it's.
You have a door, anybody could walk in, talk to the contractor, right?
Yeah.
So it, that's some, you have to check on it.
Exactly. No, I, I.
I've had that issue before.
I couldn't agree more, and it's just that the, the space up above, as I said to Mr. Akabachi, the, it could be used for storage, and the first floor could be used for office. And, and that would, that would eliminate that situation.
That's a bridge you'll have to cross eventually.
Right, exactly.
Believe me, you're gonna hit it, trust me.
Oh, yeah.
Or you're gonna put an elevator.
Well, a lift.
Right, you know what I'm saying? So anyway, on the use variance.
On each unit.
Right? Yeah, yeah, you're supposed to.
Well, anyhow.
Anyway, Chris, do you have a question?
So is there gonna be any light manufacturing?
No.
Going on in these units? So if you have a, a carpenter that makes cabinets to put in houses?
Well, I don't know if that'd be.
Yeah. A sar in there and, and make his own cabinets to, to put in houses he builds? Would that be somebody who would go in one of these units?
I'm not sure that'd be considered light manufacturing. That would be, that would be a carpenter's shop, that there's somebody with, a cabinet shop, but I'm not sure it'd be light manufacturing.
That's a pretty intense use. I don't think that would be allowed under light manufacturing.
Well, this is what I'm, I'm willing to grant, it's a strip commercial there?
Yes, yes.
I'm willing, I'm willing, I personally, I wanna give a variance for, for the use, but not industrial use, in case when you sell it or rent it, somebody bring a machine, say, well, we have a variance, it's industrial, I could put a machine in that slot. So I'm personally, I don't know how the board look at it, will grant the variance in the strip commercial. So whatever the strip commercial law or bylaw dictates, if they allow light manufacture, you could do it, but if we give you.
You can't give us the storage component if you don't give us the industrial use.
Yes, I can. Of course I can, that's what we're here for. It's only, we can give you a variance for storage. Anyway, storage, Patrick, is not allowed in the industrial park anyway. There, we don't have, storage's not allowed in town Wareham period. Even industrial, you need a variance.
Actually, storage is allowed in the industrial. Can you read that bylaw there? We got the bylaws. Actually, that's where storage is allowed. It's not allowed anywhere else.
Just gave a variance on that place next to Noria for storage.
Yeah, I'll show you.
When did that came in effect?
Yeah, it's, it's here.
In the use table, you find in storage is listed as now is.
In the industrial zone.
No, no, in, under industrial, the definition, no, not, no. What's the page number on that, Peter? This, this page here. Is there a page number on the bottom of that? Is that? Page number, section number twenty-one, it's section three-four, three-forty-point-nine, industrial uses. Page twenty-one? Yeah. Three-forty-point-nine, section three-forty-point-nine. Manufacturing, three-forty-pointed manufacturing, light manufacturing, industrial, travel, fish processing, storage facilities. Right, right. All right, and then it goes to the next page. Goes to the next page. But hang on, I shouldn't say hang on. Excuse me.
What's it say, Jim?
Under industrial, activity including resource extraction, manufacturing, warehousing, storage, distribution, shipping, and other related uses. So storage is an allowed use under industrial.
I disagree. We just gave a value. Let me see it, Jim, please.
It does, what are you reading?
You gave them an industrial.
I'm reading industrial. Oh, you're reading industrial. Well, you talked about storage.
The other guy, you gave him an industrial.
You said storage, then you read industrial. No, no, I said, hang on.
One across from.
Yes. That's what you gave him. We, we read the thing, it's, you gave him an industrial use.
Excuse me. I'll give you this, did you find it? I, I see the industrial. Industrial use, and it says activity including resource extraction, which. He's, he's reading this, which is, we gave a, across from highway concrete. They, they still have to get, they still have to.
Go to the planning board.
They still have to get a septic system in there, which I don't think, but that's, that's got nothing to do with us, yeah. But, but the, the definition of industrial, that's, we're not seeking light manufacturing. I, I, I understand the question.
Like, would you be okay with the variance to build the storage, not keep it in the strip commercial versus calling it industrial?
So under, under storage, the very last item on this says, any structure that is used for storage of inanimate objects or organic objects. Storage containers used for temporary construction activities shall be limited to forty-foot-long containers and for a period of up to six months, and must be associated with an open building permit at this property.
Yeah, that's for storage, if you build in something.
That's for a corn Xbox. But see, this, under industrial uses, this is what's allowed. So if you don't give us an industrial use, there's, none of this matters, I would think.
Right, we'll give you a zone, a variance for the construct, for a strip commercial. I'm, I don't feel, personally, I don't feel comfortable to change strip commercial with all the neighbors next to, next to where, there's no offense to anybody, to make it industrial where there's neighbors. All of a sudden, you have big machine because you have industrial variance. I mean, I know that's not your intention, but maybe you sell it or rent it, and some guy comes up with a big machine with a lot of noise.
If I could just speak to your prior decision on the twenty-seven-thirty-one, I've, I've got the decision on my computer. The relevant paragraph here says, "Decision of the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals on the application of Kevin Welch here and after the applicant seeking a variance pursuant to zoning bylaw section fifteen-fifty-four to allow the industrial use associated with two buildings containing five entrance spaces each to be used by tradesmen for property located in the MR thirty zoning district at Cran, at twenty-seven-thirty-one Cranberry Highway, and for such other relief as the Board of Appeals may grant." So I, I guess what I would say is, you've, you've already acted to grant that industrial use in a, in a residential zone, because apparently, as I understand it, the gentleman had a house on the front of his property, so that that triggered, that triggered sort of, he sort of rezoned himself into residential by having the house, but then he wanted to do something commercial out back. Do I, do I have that?
No, they're gonna tear the house down.
They're gonna tear that.
Okay.
But regardless, the issue, do you insist, why would you want industrial? If you get your storage, your, in strip commercial, you could do a lot of light manufacturing, you still can.
I'm, I'm just concerned in, in terms of a potential appeal, that if we don't change the underlying use to something that specifically states storage, that now we're subjecting us and possibly you to, to appeal.
No, we'll, we'll, we'll write in the variance that storage is allowed in the strip commercial zone. We will write in our decision.
Yeah.
We could write this. We'll give you a variance, I mean, I, I'm for it, I don't know about the board.
Right, yeah, no, I understand.
You know, if we give you a, I will, I'm willing to give you a variance for a storage facility used for a storage, and wherever the strip commercial laws allows you to do, you could use it there, and on top of it, you allowed to have storage.
It, it does work the same way, however, there, there seems to be, we talked about it before, sometimes they, if it's not in the code, I don't think, it's unclear in the code what's allowed to, to be done. There's, there's retail, there's, there's office.
You could do it all, plus storage.
Plus storage.
Whatever strip commercial allows, plus storage.
I get, yeah.
I think, I think. You know, I'm afraid maybe we overlooked that, we maybe made a mistake across from highway concrete.
Yeah, I don't like the word industrial either.
You know, we can't keep making the same mistake. And it serves you fine. This way it works fine for you.
And and I think I think that that, you know, the practicality of 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 anybody using it for an industrial use is is limited, which which I think calling it storage, I'm I'm not looking.
Well, I'm sure nobody cannot come build a factory manufacturer with seven hundred ninety square feet.
No, I I agree.
Do our homework.
Whatever makes whatever makes the board comfortable because I I don't mind coming here. But I'd like I'd like I'd like to come here as a guest.
All right, let's go back with our question. Where were we, Chris or Rich?
Josh had his hand up.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention, I don't think you made any mistakes with the approval of that last application because you you specified that it was for trade use only. And we went we went through the distinction of saying, you know, carpenters, plumbers, electricians. I I think it was reasonable within that approval that it wasn't for industrial use, but it was actually for the trade uses that were associated.
I forget. It's been a while. I forget it. You know.
We're good. We're okay with that. I mean, you give us the storage, then we have all the issues uses that you can have.
Well, you gotta make sure everybody's okay, not only me.
Does that count as a vote?
Fifteen units, you don't want fifteen plumbers in there because.
No, no, of course not.
But there's only so many plumbers and electricians and masons that need a unit that size before you run out of trades. Although a solar install, I mean.
There's a lot of.
If we sat here and really worked at it, we could think of fifteen different uses, but.
The other the other piece, Mr. Clerk, is that we don't know what the status of the work on the bridges is gonna be. Uh, but when that happens, there is going to be a gigantic need for contractor space when that happens.
I've already, somebody asked me for housing for two thousand twenty-seven for contractors.
Oh, yeah.
I've already been asked.
You're gonna get a lot of that.
Yeah, because it's gonna, the Cape almost, I know, you know Attorney Bello, right? You know Attorney Bello?
Yeah, yeah.
He wants to move this side of the bridge before they construct. Everybody don't wanna deal with that, but anyway.
Better before the bridges, as we stated once upon a time.
So we're okay with the storage part. No, I see what you're saying. I I understand.
We go back to to board. Rich, I'd love to add you.
Oh, I'm good.
You're good.
All right, here's what I see. This guy Mannix, he likes to find things that are not in the bylaw and then build a building around it. I I'm gonna speak to him, you know? I wanna put in a house, I wanna put assisted living and it's not, you don't have it in your zoning bylaws and you don't allow it in your town, but I wanna do it.
It wasn't assisted living. It was.
Well, wait a minute. We can call it a, we can call it an intermediate care facility if we can work with you. Okay. Oh, I don't wanna do that now. Now I wanna build something else that's not in your bylaws. Well, you know, now let me ask you a question. Do you see any merit in instead of building fifteen units, getting approved for fifteen and putting up a seven or an eight? And when you start filling that up with tenants, start building the second building so you don't have a whole bunch of empty units?
Chances are that that would be the the process.
Probably gonna put up one building and then the other.
Yeah, there are two separate lots and, you know, and 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 they're they're held that way and and yeah, that would be the idea.
I know at least five, six people looking for places like this that keep asking me.
What's that?
I know at least five or six contractors that always ask me for.
That want a place already.
Like that, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think.
I know a guy that put up a building that had four or five units and one tenant.
Took it off.
Only wanted two and then before the building was finished, he took the whole building. I know about a guy like that, too.
Anyway, that being said, let's go to the public. Anybody want to speak in favor of this matter? Against, against or in favor?
You gotta go to a microphone and speak and say your name.
You can have this one, sir.
Yeah, sit right there.
I'll get up and you can sit near the question, all right?
State your name and address.
Hi, my name's, it's working. Hi, my name's David Dixon. I live at five Plymouth Road. Wareham, Mass. It's a property right that abuts the back of that property.
Damian's pantry.
What?
Damian's pantry.
The old Damian's pantry, yep. One of the things, I don't, I haven't seen the plans for this. Where is the exit gonna be? And is any of them gonna exit out on Plymouth Road?
That is.
There's one exit on.
One and one on Plymouth, one on Cranberry, one on Sandwich Road.
Exactly like the other one was.
Right.
Okay.
This is the, the main entrance is here.
The other one on Plymouth Road is gonna get a gate.
That's six, yep.
With the housing.
And this is the other entrance. This is Plymouth Road.
Yeah, but that's again, that's that's an issue of the fire department. They they they'd like to get some access to the buildings, but the the main entrance, everything would happen here. There's really no.
But there's nothing limiting any flow here.
Uh, no, I guess it's not.
My granddaughter and I ride up and down that road all the time.
That was the only way, yeah.
That's gonna change. It's quite a bit, possibly.
Well, I don't think so because, first of all, we can't, we can't limit it because of the fire department. We went through this in the last hour. Because much, there aren't too many people that are gonna come in and out of here. That's that's the difference.
You know, guys, you're getting, you're getting a little bit of, I I don't mind your speaking, but the poor recorder is gonna try to.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Is it possible to get a copy of these?
Take that one. I want the box. Do we have the next one?
We don't. Oh, yeah, give him this one.
Yeah, take that one.
We usually charge, we usually charge seven fifty. It's special, I'm special for you today, ten bucks.
Yeah, the two hours I waited out there.
All right, so. So, sir, are you, are you in favor or against?
I'm questioning at the moment.
Okay.
Questioning, um, because I don't know.
What's your concerns? Concerns? What do you have concerns with?
Do we know it all? No, probably too early in the thing to know where garbage is gonna be stored, uh, trash containers, whatever, um, whether it's gonna butt up on my property and I'm gonna get stuck smelling.
All right, this project, after they leave here, if they get approval, they will go to the planning board for all these details, lighting, exits, trash, trees, parking lot, striping. So this, you'll have the opportunity with the planning board to do the site plan. With us, either we, whether we allow it or not, that's it.
Just the beginning stages.
With us, the beginning and the end, whether we allow it or not. We don't go into details and exits, lights, all these things. All these pretty things, you go with the pretty people at the planning board.
We put them in a cage and hang them and then the planning board gets sticks and sharpen them and they poke them.
Poke at them.
All right, does that answer your questions?
This is a process. I I think so. I think so.
So you will be notified and you'll go to the hearing and you'll have all your answers. Yes, Counselor?
If I may just sort of summarize, what we're doing here today is we're we're deciding what uses we can have here and then the special permit for the parking. The planning board will decide how those uses are implemented on the site.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. Uh, I'd like to ask a question to make sure I've got in my head what I think I'm expecting is something very similar to Patterson's Brook.
If you wanna say so. It would be nicer newer, more parking. Patterson Brook don't have good parking. This one does, pretty much.
Store front, front door.
Pretty much.
Bays in the back to accept incoming goods, whatever.
Sound like that.
I know what he means about the mezzanine over the front area, either for office use or for storage use. I I know what, okay. So I understand it pretty well. Does that sound it? Because that's similar to what Patterson's.
Very similar.
Am I saying that right? Is it Patterson?
Patterson Brook, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, very similar.
Okay, that gives me, that's what I didn't know at all. Okay. I'll, so I think that's where we're at right now is I don't know whether for or against or anything because I don't know enough.
You're pleading no, though. I get you.
All right, you all set, sir?
I think so.
Thank you. Next person who would like to speak against? Name and address, please.
Jim, Jim, Manise Cranberry Highway. Um, so you won't be doing site plan review or taking?
It's planning board now.
Okay. And, um, it's an industrial variance, use variance you're looking for?
It's a use variance, but not industrial. It'd be, well, I shouldn't, it's a variance to construct a storage facility with the offices.
So will it be?
Not a, or we could dictate it the same we did, Josh, with that project. The use, the industrial use with the specific use, it'll be the same kind of condition like for tradesmen to be using it. Not manufacturing and high scale, whatever the strip commercial allow. If strip commercial allow a guy to take a hammer and build a box, he, they could do it. But if the industrial, if they say we wanna sign, wanna do something, the industrial park do like Factory Five, we're gonna, we're gonna say no.
So will it be, um, will the setbacks be considered for commercial or industrial?
Commercial.
With just an industrial use?
Industrial use. We don't.
Specifically state, site plan is done at planning board.
Planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you good?
So I I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you gonna have any opinion on food-related use of those structures?
I don't anticipate that because it's it's not.
A guy came and said, I wanna have tanks in there and I wanna buy lobster's wholesale and then pedal them out of there. Would you allow that? Would that be a proper use? Suppose a guy said he wanted to buy, go to New Bedford and buy the shack off all the guys off the boat and bring it back and.
Yeah, what's wrong with that?
Well, I I mean, I don't mean to be impertinent, but we could suppose a lot of things, but the market. No, but the market bears.
Food.
No, but food, it's not.
Object to or agree to or you have any?
I I wouldn't, I don't, I I wouldn't wanna put food in there because that 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 creates a problem for the tenants. What you're, especially what you're talking about, a lobster thing, if you want to be specific. I mean, that would create a problem, I think, with 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 the with the whole thing. And and number one, that that's speculation. But number two, you know, any kind of food use, it it depends on traffic. Now, this, I I mean foot traffic, not building, you know, so who?
No, but Jim is probably asking, if you don't mind me, for a wholesale, not restaurant. I don't, I I think it's fine. I don't see a problem if a guy buy wholesale and sell them to dealers or has his warehouse there and he distribute them to restaurants.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant, no, I'm sorry. I thought you meant a restaurant.
No, 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 no.
I'm thinking, when you say lobster, I think of a lobster bar.
No, no. You're hungry. That's what you think.
So the guy, he gets known for being a guy that pays twenty-five cents a pound more for lobsters off the boat. And everybody brings their boat in and they take all their lobsters up to this guy, they put them in his tank and then he raises the price by a buck and includes delivery and he takes them out to restaurants. Or he goes to all the fishermen on the scallop boats and he says, I know you guys each take a forty-pound bag.
We already have a pretty large one of those in town, so I don't know if we're gonna be able to have two.
Okay, well, I just didn't know if that was something that you would or would not allow.
I would, I would only allow what's allowed by the bylaws.
Okay, that's a good answer. That's that's a good answer. That's.
That's why.
The the previous question, audience member was asking about smells and odors and foods and so forth.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah, no.
So I was just looking to see, to kind of put his mind at ease without saying, hey, this guy's afraid you're gonna have rotten fish in the backyard.
I doubt that that would occur, but.
The other thing, too, is any permit or variance that you issue is subject to state law, uh, environmental code, uh, state health code, all of those things. So if if he got a stinky lobsterman in there, uh, I think it would be pretty easy to root out the stinky lobsterman.
Yeah, I I don't think that's what anybody. Anyway, whatever strip commercial allowed, you'll be allowed to do it and you'll follow the rules and the story. All right, that being said, would you like Counselor to add anything before we close?
Uh, no, uh, I guess then what we would be seeking from you, uh, in terms of your of your vote would be to, uh, issue us a a storage variance in the commercial strip zone, attendant with all of the uses that are allowed in the commercial strip zone.
I got it.
You got it?
Thank you.
Because he's the man who's writing it, yeah.
Yeah, and and also, uh, we would like you to fix the parking spots for the buildings respectively at thirty-five total spaces for the, uh, the one we've identified as two thirty-six. Just I have to apologize to the board, different authorities call these properties different things. Uh, we've got, you know, the assessors have, I think, two thirty-six and two forty-two. The Registry of Deeds has two thirty-eight and two forty. The lower number is always the same, the higher number is always the same.
Yeah, but you haven't been to the post office yet because they got a third number for that area.
I'm sure, I'm sure they do.
All right, before, now, how many parking you have outside total right now?
Uh, right now, we have for building one, the two thirty-six, that would be twenty-eight outside and seven inside.
No, forget the inside. Outside, twenty-eight. I don't watch it. And the other building?
Uh, the other building, it is twenty, yeah, pull it up. I don't wanna give them the wrong number, so let's, let's get it right off of the plan.
Well, while they're getting that number, it is appropriate for you under the use variance to specify the uses that are allowed or not allowed. So if there were concerns that the board had, let's say, a lobster stallman working out of there, it it's appropriate under the use variance to allow or disallow certain uses.
All right, but where are we gonna go for? There's hundreds of uses.
I I'm I'm just throwing it out there for your consideration.
I I would leave it, personally, where's, whatever strip commercial allowed, they allow, end of story.
I'm with that. I'm good with that.
And I'll just mention that what I what I have been seeing in some communities from similar projects and that they haven't accounted for this is, um, auto body repair and auto mechanical repair. It it sounds like you guys have, are prepared to work through those issues.
You gotta have a special permit.
Yeah, that's all special permit.
Yeah.
Right, but it's just a consideration and the contractor bay bylaw that's going before the town now does.
Auto repair, car sales, mechanic, this all needs special permit from zoning. So they'll have to come back.
What if, what if a guy wants to just bring one antique car inside there and it's a hobby?
Repair.
It's up to him. He needs the whole, he needs the whole bit.
Auto service is auto service under the bylaw. There's there's no, there's no exceptions for hobbyists or a thing like, things like that.
Mr. Mannix, you know how many parking you have?
Yeah, twenty-seven outside on two thirty-six.
Twenty-seven, okay, so.
Yep, twenty, twenty-seven on the second building.
On the first building.
First building, two thirty-six.
First building, twenty-seven.
Two thirty-six Sandwich Road, twenty-seven outside and then a total of thirty-five. It's twenty-seven plus eight.
Yeah, with the inside.
The inside.
No, forget the out inside.
Twenty-seven outside. And then on on two forty-two Sandwich Road, it's twenty-four.
Outside.
Outside.
Okay.
So twenty-four and twenty-seven.
Fifty-one cars. Okay, so we'll begin, grant the special permit for the whole project for fifty-one cars if the board wishes to.
Well, what we, what we would ask is that you grant the special permit for twenty-seven outside and and eight inside so that we can memorialize that and go ahead with our plans to the planning board.
But inside, if you park, nobody's gonna stop you. It's a plus. It's like.
Inside, storage of vehicles will not be considered in the parking formula.
Yeah, I mean, you could park inside. Nobody's gonna tell you, no, that's extra for you. You wish to park inside.
That's storage. We're gonna allow, if your building allows vehicles inside, then good.
So let's say, I I believe the commissioner saying outside, you need like sixty-some parking spaces. We're gonna give you a special permit for fifty-one if the board wishes to. You understand? And the inside, you could park two cars. Good for you.
You're trying to get to over the sixty by putting some indoors and we're reluctant to do it.
Well, I I don't know. No, we're not, because we understand coming in for a special permit that you can adjust that number to your wishes. So it it's not that. It's just that, you know, we wanna make sure that, uh, you know, the carpenter who pulls his his pickup truck in at night can actually do so.
Of course he can.
So we want that, you know, we wanted that memorialized as a parking spot, not necessarily to account for different sorts of uses, but rather to, uh, allow him to do that.
See, if we went to the planning board and the planning board said, well, you can't park inside.
They can say that.
Why can't they?
We can. The only one can tell you, no, the fire department. That's it.
The planning board's concern was counting the inside as a parking space to count towards the total number of parking spaces.
So we're giving you relief on that.
Yeah, I I I think if your concern is, um, whether or whether or not you can park in the building, they're not restricting you from parking in the building. They're just not saying that they're allowing a parking space in the building.
And the only one can restrict you are the fire department, but if you have a sprinkler, they'll say, it's fine. You could park all you want.
Oh, I guess you, yeah.
You know, that's why I said, any anything, any vehicles parked inside the building shall not be considered part of the parking schedule.
Josh explained it perfectly. You worry about the planning board beating you on parking. This will give you the special permit, the waiver, and you go from there. Then they can.
That's what we're worried about.
Can't you think of something else that's not in our bylaws to build there?
I'm thinking of it, but I can't come up right now, but give me, give me a little bit of time.
Well, Jim, if, Jim, if we okay it, then he's finally done. He doesn't have to come see us anymore.
So you think.
Unless he changes his mind, right.
I'd like to come back as a visitor.
I got a question.
It's cheaper when you come back as a visitor, isn't it?
So his his previous, um, level-two care facility that we gave him, uh, variances for and everything, what happens with that? If we grant him this, um, does he still have that variance where if he decides he wants to build that, he could build that instead?
Well, we're gonna ask him to give it away.
And his opening statement said that there was.
We are, we are good on that current existing permit until, uh, I think some, like the first or second week of January.
Twenty-six.
Was it twenty-six or twenty-seven? Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, I believe. I believe it's twenty-six.
But I mean, it it it's not feasible at this point in time.
The market has changed dramatically. There's there's just not enough help. There's a need for it. There's a bigger need for it, but there's just not enough help. There's a bigger need for it, but there's just not enough help. The business, people that we were talking about doing this with have given up the business and that, that's the problem. You know, and, and I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but I, you know, it's, it's a hard road to climb. So this is why we came here, you know, to try to avoid...
I would feel better about him giving that up if I approved this.
You don't wanna see an either or. You got to...
Right, I don't wanna see an either or. I wanna see one or another. And number two, that I was wondering, do you plan on managing this yourself or is this something you're gonna put up for sale for somebody else to purchase with all the variances and review?
We don't know.
Just curious.
I can't answer that question. As far as management goes, I, I think I know who's gonna manage it, but that, that's, I'm not sure. I really, I, I don't know. I don't know why you're asking the question, but, but I don't know.
Well, I'm just curious because you didn't build the other facility and I thought maybe the reason for that wasn't the market that you couldn't sell it to, to anybody and nobody wanted to purchase a facility like that here in London.
I'm guessing if you come, if you go by there in the spring, you're gonna see some buildings.
No, but that isn't, that isn't the point. I, I, I don't mean to, look, I'm looking for your votes, I don't wanna... But, but the point is, the market... Gosnell came over here and, and took a facility that, now compare what they've done compared to what I had to offer. And it, it, it's a different facility. So that's one thing. There's, there's some business there. The facility that we were offering is, is for another name, you know, it's, it's...
Assisted living.
Assisted living. Assisted living has gone completely...
It's diminishing now.
It's diminished, it, it's gone, you know, we, I know we had to change it because it wasn't in the code. That, that's, that wasn't my decision, but quite frankly...
Assisting living was, I think, in our code. I don't think you went for assisted living.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't, Chris. It wasn't in the code and that, that's what the hangup was. It, it's a similar use. So the commissioner at the time, you know, said that if you call it assisted living, I'm good with it.
Right, it's, but they filed for intermediate care.
Intermediate care.
We have nursing home in our bylaw. We don't have assisted living or intermediate care. So that's why we treated it, because the state have some definition about assisted living, we treated it as assisted living. And to, to speak to what he's saying, Mr. Mannix, put you at ease, these businesses are really dying because the states find it more financially feasible to send a nurse to your house than building, and instead of funding an assisted living or intermediate care with staff, roof over the head and stuff, well, they could send the nurse who they pay her the same money she goes there, goes to your house for when you need it, I hope you never will, for the same money and they don't have to pay the overhead. They pay the nurse the same money, but they don't have to pay the overhead.
Right.
So that's what the state and the federal government had in now.
It's called aging in place. That's the latest term.
Aging in place.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just speak a little bit more to that point, to Mr. Clancy. One of the, the issues here in terms of, of trying to run those places is in addition to the, the financial infeasibility, again, the aging in place. But, jeez, I just lost my train of thought. We don't see, when somebody passes away and you probate their will, you have to notify the state Medicaid unit out in Worcester. Because if you've been in a nursing home and you've had any property of consequence in your name for the five years preceding your death, there's a lookback provision.
I, I understand. I have parents that are in a nursing home that I went through all of this with. I do definitely understand that.
Yeah. So with, with that in mind, the state Medicaid unit is getting more and more aggressive with their attorneys claiming that trusts that people thought were good, they thought were sufficiently irrevocable, because they have to be an irrevocable trust in order to get the, the house asset out of their name. They are going to court on a routine basis fighting just about every single estate thing that goes in when there's a Medicaid bill sitting there. Even if there was a, a five-year trust, they're still going to court, they're still trying to scrape every penny they can out of those wills. So that speaks to the, to the state's not happiness with having to fund these, these things. Which, again, makes it even more, you know, financially infeasible.
If, if I may, Mr. Clancy, that's... The question you're asking me is, am I willing to give something up that I have for something that I don't have? That's not a good question to me. I, I have, I have permits in place. Who knows what'll happen? What I wanna have happen is that this has to get approved to this board and then it has to get approved to the planning board. So I have a little bit of a road ahead of me.
Will you be able after, if you get approved, to give the other permit away? Will you be willing?
Oh, yeah, of course.
All right, we could put a condition. That if you get approved this, you have to be willingly...
Look, if, if you can, you can put, if you, if it's legal to do, I don't wanna get into that. We're gonna get into the whole thing about the state coming after me because I'm, I'm ready for a nursing home pretty soon anyhow. The thing is, what, what we need to do is, is I'd like to move this project along and I think it's a practical way to move it along, to, to utilize the property and, and it's good, it's for the good of the town. For the tradespeople, for the people that can use it, that's, that's fine. I just wanna be able to get through the steps. Now, you can't, you can't help me with the plan. I'll go to the planning board. This is all set up to go. We've done all the, everything we need and, and we're willing to go there. Yes, I would give it up. Once I have, once I have approval from the planning board.
Okay, that's fair. Do you think it's fair enough? We condition that because...
Sure. Oh, yeah, no, that's fair.
It doesn't make sense, we grant you, you have two permits for a property. It's like you have a permit for a house on a property, single-family home, then you come back to build another house, then you have two permits.
And since we're in the outer negotiation, if I don't get permission from the planning board, will you extend that permit?
Well, once we get to it, we'll get to it. We extended to it.
That wasn't the request that was presented tonight. Yeah. If you need an extension, you have to come back for that.
That would have to be separate under that permit.
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, since we're talking about it, that's all.
Yeah, a variance can extend it only once for one year. That's it. As a matter of fact, that was in today, can only get one extension. But we'll cross that bridge. When we get there, you're willing to give it up if you get approved from zoning and planning. We'll put it in a condition, Josh, okay?
Understood.
All right, very well. That being said...
Are we ready to make?
We close.
Make a decision tonight?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to close any further discussion open to the public and close the public portion of this hearing.
Okay, second by Rich. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to grant... I don't know if we need to do this. You got two different deeds, two different properties?
Yeah.
It has to be both.
So I know, I know you want them both, but do you want them as two separate decisions, I guess?
Yes.
So we need to vote on this two times. Once, we need to vote...
Four times. The application in one, one, one application, both properties. So the, so the decision will be for 238 and 240. We cannot separate this.
Okay, so we're gonna grant them both.
Yeah.
A use for storage and contractor-type units. One, one building having seven units, the other building having eight. And that's, that's a use. And it's gonna be anything that would be allowed in strip commercial, which I believe that's already zoned as strip commercial. What's allowed there. And additionally, in that same vote, we're gonna grant a waiver on the parking requirements such that one has 24 and the other one has 27 for a total of 51 outside parking spaces between the two parcels.
All right.
And this will be conditioned, this will be conditioned upon the surrender of any pre-existing permits.
Once they get to the planning board.
Please, we can, we can handle this.
Any pre-existing, once site plan review is, or may or may not be approved.
All right, I reiterate on Mr. Akubachi's condition. So that we have a use variance for number 236, 238, 240 and 242 Sandwich Road. So special permit for the use, also a special permit for the parking to allow 51 parking spaces total for the, for the project. And Josh, you'll do your writing how it's supposed to be. Any discussion on these, on the, on the motion, with Jim's motion? Okay, here and none. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. A Caris, thank you very much.
Imagine when you went for the assisted living, it took about 40 meetings.
Yeah, but I wasn't doing the work then.
So Josh, use that.
No, and you didn't do much work this time either.
That's because the project sold itself, Jim.
Josh? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
So use variance, special permit parking and giving up the previous permit when approved by planning board. Three conditions.
Yeah, I got it. Well, more with your standard, yeah, you got it.
Yeah, all the regular baloney. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Don't move.
Second. Motion by Chris to adjourn, second by Richard. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim? Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, adjourned. Thank you.